Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 8, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Wintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Aaron Ajarian.
Here. Councilmember Friedman, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. Please rise, and I invite you to join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invitation. Today is International Women’s Day, and it is an opportunity for each of us to give thanks to and remind the women in our lives how much they mean to us and how they make us whole, be they aunts, cousins, sisters, daughters, mothers, grandmothers, wives, girlfriends, or just friends, colleagues at work, or any other woman in our life who completes us. Helen Keller, a great figure, political activist, and representative of human character as it should be, wrote once that “Many persons have wrong idea of what constitutes true happiness is not attained through self-gratification but through fidelity to worthy purpose.” Let us remember today and say a prayer of thanks for the women in our world who help us attain happiness through their fidelity to worthy purposes every day. We owe them a great debt and are grateful for their presence in our lives. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the March 8, 2011, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, March 3, 2011, March 3, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
Next item would be presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is Agenda Preview for the meetings of March 15, 2011.
Cheers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we have no business agenda items for the Glendale Housing Authority. For the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, we have a couple of items commencing at 2:30. Director of Community Development regarding Stage 1 Design Review for properties located at 320 through 324 North Central Avenue and 208 West Lake Zinkton Drive and 317 through 345 North Orange Street. Public hearing, this is Director of Community Development regarding a 72 parking space exemption request from DreamWorks Animation Campus for excess stall standards at 1,000 Flower Street. We do have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, a public hearing, this is Director of Community Development regarding Courtyard by Marriott’s proposed development to be located at 225 West Wilson Avenue. And secondly, Director of Community Development regarding evaluation of several sustainable construction practices exceeding the statewide mandatory measures required under Cal Green in preparation of a citywide sustainability coordinator. In the evening at 6:00 P. M. for the Glendale City Council meeting, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, this is regarding carpet replacement at various city buildings. Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2010-2011 Street Rehabilitation Project. Acting Director of Community Services and Parks regarding receipt of grant funds for the design and construction of Maryland Avenue Park. And we do have adoption of ordinances, and these are ordinances that have to do with Director of Community Development, proposed to amend Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the downtown specific plan relating to miscellaneous provisions and minor cleanups. And lastly, we have a hearing, Director of Public Works regarding grant of a franchise to Pacific Pipeline System for the operation and maintenance of an oil pipeline, Line 63. That’s my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 4, City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments.
I want to talk about the Habitat for Humanity project. We were all there, was it Saturday?
Yeah.
On Saturday. And this is our seventh project with Habitat for Humanity. This one’s on Geneva. And anyway, it’s always really, really rewarding to see the families that are going to have to devote a minimum of 500 hours of their own personal labor in order to move into the unit. So it works out very well for the families. There’s a lot of sweat equity that they put into these projects. We’ve had seven projects, and what’s interesting is how the people who were, who eventually, you know, worked on and moved into the other units now come to help the people who are now working on their unit. So, I mean, there’s a real community that’s formed with these Habitat for Humanity families. So it was quite a positive experience. Then I also wanted to read something about our Standard &amp; Poor’s rating analysis since, especially now during the campaign season, people are constantly talking about the kind of financial problems that we have in this city. Standard &amp; Poor’s Rating Services raised its issuer bonds rating to AAA from AA+ on the city of Glendale. The rating action reflects our city’s view of the city’s improved general fund reserves and management practices. The ICR, which is the Issuer Credit Rating, further reflects our view of the city’s diverse and expanding local economic base and full participation in the Los Angeles area economy. Very strong levels of unreserved fund balances, strong financial performance bolstered by good financial management practices and very low debt levels. So for those candidates who keep insisting that we’re in these deep financial straits, I think Standard &amp; Poor says otherwise. And these are from investors. These are from people who look at bottom-line activities of cities or of any bond that they buy. That’s it.
Yes. Two of you may have noticed that I wasn’t here last week, and I wanted to just give a little update about where I was and why. I was in Washington, D.C. last week, not on behalf of the city of Glendale, well, tangentially on behalf of the city of Glendale. I was there in my capacity as Glendale’s representative as a Board of Director on the Metropolitan Water District. We went to go and talk about water issues, a few of the directors, in Washington. The first day, I was there for two days. The first day, we lobbied several congressmen’s offices who hadn’t yet signed on to a piece of legislation called the Hoover Bill. And what this would do is, cities like Glendale and agencies who were part of the original investors in Hoover Dam, which gives us a portion of our power, have basically lower electricity rates coming from Hoover because we made that first initial investment. Well, that investment’s been renewed once or twice since Hoover was built, and it’s set to expire again in 2016. And when it expires, if we don’t have an agreement in place to continue in some kind of participation, we’ll lose, not only the city of Glendale, but Metropolitan Water District will lose that cheaper electricity. And for Metropolitan, having to go on the open market to buy that power would cost approximately $100 million a year. I don’t know what Glendale’s portion would be. It would be a lot less, but that would certainly affect ratepayers all over Southern California very dramatically. So California, Colorado, and Utah have all made an agreement about how to continue using Hoover, freeing up some of the power to new agencies, to growing cities, but also retaining a lower rate for the original investors in Hoover like Glendale and Metropolitan. And we’re hoping to get Congress to pass this bill so that we have some certainty about keeping those power rates low into the foreseeable future. So after the day of lobbying, we were able to get about another seven congressmen to sign on as cosponsors of the bill. So it was very successful. I don’t know when they’re going to be taking the bill up, but hopefully it’ll be sooner rather than later, and it’ll pass. The second day was the conference for the Association of California Water Agencies, which was water agencies from all over California. And it was a pretty intense day. We had lectures in the morning about the budget. We had lectures from representatives of the Environmental Protection Agency, from the Secretary for Water and Science, and from the Natural Resources Conservation Service to talk about water issues, pollutants in water, water rates, you know, anything having to do with this most precious resource. And then we all went over to the Longworth House Office Building, which is where Congress resides. And they put us all into one of the hearing rooms, and then one after the other, and sometimes overlapping, members of Congress came in. So we were addressed that day on not only water issues, but I’d say more budget issues than water, because everyone there is, you know, it’s kind of all budget all the time right now. So clearly, they’re going to talk about the budget, and they’re going to talk about how that then relates to water and to other issues in California. So we had Representative, we had Jeff Denham, Congressman Jeff Denham, Congressman John Giarmetti, Congressman Tom McClintock, Congresswoman Karen Bass, Congressman Devin Nunes, Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, Congressman Ken Calvert, and Congressman Jim Costa all come and addressed us that afternoon. And it was fascinating, because you really get to see the polarity that’s going on in Washington politics. When you have someone like a Tom McClintock, who’s very conservative, very much wanting to kind of get back to the 50s, build more big hydro, build more dams, kind of get rid of the EPA because they just stand in the way of, you know, building things. And then you have John Giarmetti, who is much more liberal, who talks about the treaties we have with Indians and the reason we can’t do big hydro, about environmental impacts, about sustainability. And you see that, boy, they’re so far apart that it’s amazing that they can even be in the same room together, much less get anything done. There were some congressmen who were more in the middle, but it really did go to show that, you know, the whole country is facing enormous challenges, and even being able to be on the same page and sharing a worldview is a big challenge at this point. So it was really, really interesting. Two other quick things about it. One of the things that was talked about quite a bit was earmarks, and the fact that this year and next year there will be no federal earmarks, and what that means. We had a lecture from, actually, from the city’s lobbyist group, the Ferguson Group, who did an analysis of the last time, which was in the 1990s, that there were no earmarks. And it’s very interesting, because whatever you feel about earmarks, what happened in the last time was, basically, the same amount of money was spent. So it’s not that money was saved, but Congress didn’t appropriate that money. So in the previous years, if you look at any one section, let’s say Environmental Protection, with congressional earmarks, let’s say 400 projects have been funded around the country. When there were no earmarks, and it was all left up to EPA to give that money out, well, they can’t really filter that many projects and that many requests. So instead, they gave away, I think the number was 10, to 10 projects. So they gave the same amount of money away, but to only to the largest cities. So what ends up happening is that the small and medium-sized cities get cut out completely because there’s no one there to advocate for them, but it’s easier for those agencies to give large tons of money to the big cities to spend on big projects. So I don’t know if that’s what’s going to happen, but that’s sort of the fear, and that’s what happened last time around. So we’ll have to keep an eye on that. Adam Schiff, of course, our congressman, was kind enough to sit down with me for a little while and talk about what he saw in the budget horizon and how it would affect Glendale. And the lack of earmarks is going to affect us. Projects like completing the Riverwalk project, where we’ve been talking about having a bridge from South-Central Glendale, the densest part of Glendale, to Griffith Park so that the people in South Glendale could get to the largest urban park in the country, is just not going to happen without earmarks. Funding for crime prevention, finishing the DNA lab, is also threatened. Any of those federal projects that we’ve been talking about, without earmarks, it looks like we may not get any of those projects. Mr. Schiff is working to see if there are other sources of funding that aren’t earmark funding, and Congress is still defining what an earmark even is. So it’s possible that some funds will be freed up, but we should anticipate a real lack of revenue for those projects that we’ve identified as being important projects for federal funding in Glendale. Mr. Schiff also talked about the CDBG funding, which is the funding that we use for our nonprofits, for emergency shelters, for youth programs. It’s federal funding that’s distributed here in the city for a lot of really important causes. And that’s very much threatened in this budget. The numbers are not accurate, but I believe that he told me that CDBG current funding is about $7 billion a year. The Democrats are proposing to cut that down to something like $5.5 billion. The Republicans want to cut it to $1.5 billion. So to go from $7 billion for the nation to $1.5 billion, if you spread that across the board, and I don’t know how it’s going to be allocated, it would be something like an 80 percent reduction in our CDBG funding, which is huge. You know, that’s pathachief funding for homeless shelters. That’s door-of-hope funding for domestic violence victims. That’s Homenet Men, that provides after-school programs and sports facilities for youth. It’s all kinds of programs. So that just leads me to my last comment, which is, as we go into the budget season in Glendale, last year, we had very good budget presentations where our departments came in one by one, and we spent days and days going over the budget. The departments came in one by one and went through their budgets, sort of program by program, to talk about what their budget was, how they were going to cut, and how that affected the programs in Glendale. And this is a message I want to give to staff, that I think this year we have to go further. And because it’s going to be inevitable that we cannot maintain our current level of programs, it’s just not going to happen. We’re going to have to cut programs. With the drop in CDBG funding, with the lack of earmarks, with redevelopment going away, with the recession, with all of the pressures that we’re facing, we’re going to have to cut programs. And so what I would like to see in this budget analysis is not just what the programs are, but who they’re serving, and some kind of metrics for each program as to their effectiveness. How many people are they supposed to serve? How many are they serving? And are they doing a good job? Are they achieving the goal they’re supposed to achieve? That’s something that we didn’t really have last year, that is going to be very important to me this year, and that I’m going to ask for in every single program that we fund, whether it’s red light cameras or it’s after-school programs. So I know that’s a lot of work for staff, but I think it’s very important that we do that and that the public can see that. And hopefully, as we go into this conversation about the budget, we’ll have more public comment than we had last year. It’s important that we hear from people to know what programs are important to the community. But thank you for allowing me a long staff comment, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time. Mr. Draymond.
Well, I will be briefer. I also attended the Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking. Very impressive. These always are. Five incredible families, five very different but unique stories. It’s very easy to be glib and stand here sometimes and criticize affordable housing programs. This city works with Habitat for Humanity, Presbyterian Homes, of course, the United Cerebral Palsy. We also work with Salvation Army and others to do these projects. And this will also include a community garden, which is terrific for the residents there and for the surrounding neighborhood. So a terrific program. I was glad to see all my colleagues there. Secondly, I want to talk about Students in Government Day, and I want to thank the Glendale Unified School District. They have representatives in the audience here in the chamber. And I want to thank Dr. Sheehan in particular and the Glendale School Board for helping this city bring Students in Government Day to Glendale. What this program is, is these are students who are in the student government program in each of the high schools in the city of Glendale. And this year, we had Hoover High, Glendale High, Crescent Valley High, and Clark Magnet High School represented. And the students come, and they sit with every department head in the city. They have some light snacks. We go around the room. Each of the department heads talks about what their department does and how, sort of, how they got from high school to the positions they’re in. They also answer questions from the students that are sometimes pretty tough questions and pretty probing sometimes as to how their department operates and how they face challenges in our city. Afterward, they have a little lunch. They come and do a tour here of council chambers. Mr. Kusakian, our city clerk, regaled them with things as diverse as what our city seal means and taking them through a mock-up agenda of a council meeting. Pretty exciting and really amazing, amazing kids. We were happy to have them again this year. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, and I won’t ask that we adjourn the meeting this night. I will do it on another night when we have less business to conduct, but I would like to acknowledge the passing of Ivan Cole. And for those of you who might remember, Ivan came here to City Council in his 90s. He was the caretaker for Rock Haven Sanitarium during its heyday, and was responsible for the landscaping at Rock Haven. And Ivan came here and spoke when the city was preparing to, was debating whether or not to purchase Rock Haven, and spoke on behalf of that. Fine gentleman. Fortunately, the Historical Society took his oral history before his passing. He passed just recently in his 90s. And on a future meeting, Mr. Mayor, I’ll talk about his service that’s being held, and we’ll talk more about Ivan’s history. It’s fascinating. You can see him, by the way, on the documentary that was done by GTV6 that was airing for a time called Historic Rock Haven. Terrific documentary, and Ivan is featured prominently in that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I just have one comment. I was happy to participate in the groundbreaking for the I-5 carpool lanes between the 134 Freeway and the Hollywood Freeway. The 170, Caltrans, and the MTA are going to be installing a carpool lane in each direction. That will be accompanied by sound walls for most of that route as well. I know that’ll be important to the folks in Glendale, for the portion that runs through Glendale. This project is, as I said, just underway. We’re expecting about a two-year construction for that. So we’re going to have a little bit of traffic, construction tie-ups, but after that, we’re going to be able to essentially come all the way from Santa Clarita and Palmdale down through the 5 downtown by carpool lane. So that should cut down everyone’s commute. Okay, any staff comments? Mr. Starver.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to mention the item 9A for this evening?
Okay. On item 9A, which was scheduled to be a public hearing by the Director of Community Development, we have asked, or I am asking that we continue that to a date in the future to be renoticed appropriately and get a little more information out to the public. We’ve had a busy week here at council. These items are not time-sensitive for the most part.
And they will take some discussion.
They will take some discussion. This includes discussion on artificial turf and hookah lounges and other sort of things, as well as some cleanup items. So do we need a motion for that, Mr. Howard?
If there’s no objection, then that’ll be taken off calendar and renoticed.
If there’s no objection, we will renotice that at a date in the future. Thank you, staff, and thank you, Mr. Agani, for otherwise being ready to prepare and present.
We might not agree, Mr. Mayor, for anybody who’s here on the item 9A, thus Director of Community Development ray proposed ordinances to amend Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code and the Downtown Specific Plan relating to miscellaneous revisions or minor cleanups.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other staff comments? Let’s move on to the next item.
Next item on the agenda is Consent Items at 5. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Mayor, with the consent calendar at 5.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Wintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Ajarian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item would be Oral Communications. This is the three-minute announcement portion.
Okay, I have two cards. Paula Devine, followed by Leon Mayor.
Mayor Najarian, City Council and staff, Paula Devine from the Commission on the Status of Women, here with Commissioner Susan Hunt. I would like to say to City Clerk Salkian, you stole a little of my thunder, but that’s okay, because I appreciate all those kind words. Today, I just am here to raise awareness for International Women’s Day. International Women’s Day is a global celebration of the economic, political, and social achievement of women past, present, and future. Since the U.N. declared International Day of Women in, well, 100 years ago, we’ve come a long way in all of those years. It’s hard to believe that in 1875, women in New York City who were working in the textile and garment industry took to the streets because they were unhappy with the conditions in their workplaces. And this protest, this march, spread worldwide and became known as Women’s Work Day. And of course, when the U.N. changed it to International Women’s Day, it became symbolic of a lot of other issues that women faced. We have seen a shift, definitely, in the attitudes toward women in the last 100 years. We’ve seen improvement in the number of women on boards and commissions, seen more legislative rights, and we’ve seen an increase in critical mass of our visibility. But still, there is much work to be done. We still have to work for equal pay and equal jobs, equality in business and in politics. We need to make education available to all women, and we need to end violence against women. Women have a voice now. Let us think globally, but let us act locally. Let’s make every day Women’s Day. Let’s make Glendale a bright, equal, safe, rewarding place for all women to live. Thank you.
Leon Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff.
That applause wasn’t for you, Leon, by the way.
Thank you. I’m here on behalf of the friends at the Glendale Library to again talk about Susan Straight, the bestselling author who’s coming to the library March 17 to talk about her book, Take One Candle and Light a Room. And she’s a great author, and we’re really pleased that she’s coming in from Riverside to handle the program. Before I talk a little bit more about her, I’d like to remind everybody, Mayor’s Prayer Breakfast Thursday, 6:30 at the Civic Auditorium. If you haven’t got a ticket yet, you can get one at the door. So that’s a great event to go to. Getting back to Susan Straight, Susan was, is a teacher at University of California at Riverside. She’s been awarded the, in 2008, the award for Superior Teaching. She’s a teacher of creative writing, and she has also written books. And the latest book she’s written, Take One Candle and Light a Room, has been honored for the 2010 Novel of the Year by the Los Angeles Times, the Washington Post, and the New York Times has also given credit to her for that. So this is a great event, 7:00 on the 17th. Now, I do have another couple of announcements to make from the library. About three months ago, we had a German film about the genocide, and we had a turnaway crowd, and people begged us, who missed it, bring this film back to the library so we can see it. We’re bringing that back to the library. That’ll be Sunday, March 27. That’s the German film, Agit. It’s in German with English subtitles. And Adam Schiff says, every American should see this film. Every American should see this film. So I have some flyers, and you get them at the library. As I leave, raise your hand if you want them. And that’s basically the announcements I have to make. We have a full program coming up for April and May, but we’ll talk about that later. So as I leave, if anybody wants these flyers, please tell me, and I’ll give them to you. Remember, free parking. You park at the Exchange Building on Maryland and get your validation for three hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next item, please. That’s all I have for this portion of Oral Communications.
Mr. Mayor and council, if I can just make a really quick announcement, since Mr. Mayor brought it up, just a reminder to everyone that the Mayor’s Prayer Breakfast is this Thursday, March 10, and it’ll be held at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. And there is a slide. Thank you, GTV6. This is a 48th annual event. Again, it’s, doors open at 6:00 A.M. Get there early, and if you’re still a little drowsy, there’ll be a bagpiper again, as there is many years before, to really wake you up. And you’ll hear keynote speaker Lisa Bowman, singer, dancer, actress, sports radio personality. This is a great event, ecumenical, representing all the faith groups in our city. And for more information, people can call 626-298-3078. And also, just want to remind everyone that the League of Women Voters held their candidate forum here at City Hall yesterday evening, right here in the council chambers. That was televised and will air again between now and Election Day, and also, it will be available for viewing online through the city’s elections website, glandavotes.org.
Mr. Draymond.
Actually, Mr. City Clerk, it already is on the website, on your site. That’s right.
It’ll be more directly accessible through our election site.
But I wanted to know if we could perhaps mention the occasion for which we are having debates, perhaps tonight. debates, perhaps tonight.
April 5th, 2011 is Election Day.
And we'll have more on that later on in the agenda.
Next is adoption of ordinances. At 7A is ordinance amending section 9.20.165 of the Glendale Municipal Code relating to the closure of specified public property located in fire hazard severity zones, offered by Councilmember Weaver on March 1st, 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was before you last week to discuss a closure of those public areas in the ROS zones, generally known as the hillside zones, where those, particularly where there's fire road access protected by a fire gate, consistent with council direction. We changed the closure hours from 10:00 AM to 6:00 AM of the next day to 10:00 PM, I'm sorry, on any day, and 4:00 AM of the next day. Should the council desire to change that again this evening, either to 5:00 AM or there's some other reasonable time, we can do that and interliniate it now. But the change has been made to 4:00 AM, and it's here before you for possible adoption.
Okay, Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I'd like to change it to 5:00 or 6:00. I prefer 6:00, but 5:00 works for me. I just think 4:00 is...
Did we go to 4:00? Did we? Did we go that?
It was, it wasn't unanimous, but I think, I believe the majority had 4:00 AM due to some of the comments from speakers, as well as I believe some firefighters are actually out, not sure if it's on mountain bikes or otherwise, at around 4:30 AM.
Yeah, I might add, we are, well, you did have some discussion about the appropriate morning time, and we, fire and police have noted that it's surprising how many people will be out jogging, walking at between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock in the morning. So the view of moving it back to shift, 6:00 would impede a lot of people that are up on the hillsides in that hour.
That was what I was getting from...
For the right reasons, not the wrong reasons.
And what I see across the canyon from me, people are out there before 5:00 o'clock sometimes.
Not uncommon.
I did get a, I did get a email, though I don't know if we all got it, somebody saying it should be 9:00 until 4:00. I think that's really pushing the envelope. I don't know if, I don't know if there's any problems between 9:00 and 10:00. There was only one email.
I do have a card from a member of the public. Let's hear from Jerry Rankin.
I'm Jerry Rankin, and I'm representing the Glenox Canyon Homeowners Association. It's good to be back with you pleasant people again. I was here last week. Personally, I don't think that it would make much difference whether it's 4:00 or 5:00 AM, you know. I probably would select 5:00 AM, but that's just, we haven't polled our homeowners to find out what they, what they think about it. With regard to the 9:00 PM closure time, I really think the parties don't really get going good until after 10:00. And I had a person mention to me the other, the other day that her friend goes walking late in the evening, so she was hoping that we wouldn't close it too early, you know, that's, so. So we have people that want to get out there and walk, both early in the morning and sometimes late at night. I'm sure that when the, the extension to 9/21/2165 happens, that we won't be enforcing it against individuals who are walking at, at like 4:45 in the morning or whatever, so. And I wanted to let you know that I was here in case you wanted to ask any questions about the homeowners association's perspective of what, what you're doing. And so far, we're very pleased with what's going on. And I also wanted, you know, to let you know that, this, this is my file on what are, all the questionnaires that we've sent out and received. And I wanted to let you know that we will keep on top of this after you have made the decision to go ahead, which I think you're going to, and let you know how, how it's coming, you know, how, whether we are pleased with, with the situation in our hills and whether this solution is really, really being effective, so. But anyway, thank you for, thank you for all the work you've done on this and the staff that has done on this, and, and let me know if there's a question that you need, need answered.
Okay. You, Mr. Weaver.
I think we all got today a letter from up on Wonderview. Question was at the time, this was Glenox Canyon, whether it would apply to the entire city or others. Wonderview Drive came in with 18 signatures on it, saying yes, we have the problems up on Wonderview, too. So they're happy that we're going to do this, so. Thank you, Jerry.
Friedman.
I wasn't here last week, but I did watch the entire meeting on, on television, so I feel like I can weigh in a little. But my, if we're taking a poll about the hours, I would go with the 4:00 to 10:00, just because I would hate to discourage people. And I can't imagine getting up at 4:00 to go for a walk, but I admire people that do. And in Glendale, we're a very law-abiding bunch, and I know that if it's set at 5:00, there are people out there that are going to go, oh, no, I would love to go for the walk this morning, but I don't have time, and it's not allowed, so I'm going to not walk, and I'm going to get dressed and drive, you know, an hour to work. So I would say, let's do the 4:00, and if it's a problem, we can come back and we can change it. But I suspect that the parties are not starting at 4:00 in the morning. They're going from midnight onwards, so if they're out there, we'll get them in the middle of the night, you know, not so much 4:00 in the morning. Thank you.
And I just want to comment that irrespective of the hours of this curfew, it is still illegal to smoke in the hillsides, to consume alcoholic beverages, to...
Open fires.
Possess illegal drugs. I think you even have to have your...
Discharge.
Discharge firearms. I think you still have to have your dog on a leash, too, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So there's still an abundance of laws, even during the permitted hours, but this way, just being up there between 10:00 and 4:00, which I'm, I think I'm hearing support for that, would make it illegal.
You can't shoot people, either.
Is charging a firearm?
24/7.
Shooting or anything else of that nature? Okay, is there a motion, Mr. Quintero?
I was going to say, for those people walking at 4:00 AM or even 5:00 AM, man, they better look out for mountain lions, because they're going to be in for a big surprise one of these, one of these walks.
Come on, I hiked those hills for, since the 1940s, and I never even saw rattlesnake.
Is that right?
Changing times, though.
Maybe they were just scared of you, Mr. Weaver.
That could have been. That worked, I'm very happy. Of course, my council colleagues aren't scared of me, I know that.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, you introduced it. Would you like to make it?
7A.
And would the hours, just so we're clear?
10:00 to 4:00.
10:00 to 4:00. Seconded by Mr. Quintero.
And that's, so the record is clear. That's for subsection D, that's for the residential open space areas. The 10:00 to 6:00 AM closure applies, as it has, to the parks and civic center and the like. This is specifically for those, those hours specifically for those open space areas and the high-fire zone areas, high-fire hazard areas, excuse me.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item at 8A, under Action Items, is City Manager, regarding consideration to adopt a resolution in support for the Glendale Unified School District's Measure S ballot measure. At 8A1 is a resolution supporting measure.
Okay, Mr. Starbord.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask John Tocotian to come to the IAS and give you a brief report on this. Let me, let me preface his remarks by saying, as you're aware, you have, we have Measure S on the ballot in the upcoming municipal election. We've been requested by the Board of Education to ask the city council for your support of the measure. John is here with a brief report to answer any questions about the implications of the measure. I know members of the school board, as well as the staff, are here to answer any questions you might have. John?
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. That pretty much says what I planned on saying during this report.
Very good, John. Are you done?
Measure S.
I'd like to conserve John's words. He's young.
Just to add on what Mrs. Starbord said, Measure S essentially would require a vote of 55% of the voters on this particular measure to pass. And if it was to pass, it would authorize GUSD to sell $270 million in general obligation bonds to finance school facilities. Funds received from the sale of these, this bond could be only, could only be used for specific purposes, as outlined in, in the measure. These include keeping classroom computers and technology up to date, providing facilities and equipment for career and technical education, improving school access for students with disabilities, providing modern science labs, upgrading campus security and safety, and improving energy efficiency to reduce utility costs. Measure S also has a number of mandatory taxpayer protections built into it. One of these includes the fact that tax rates would not increase beyond what was paid in 2009-10. Second is, all funds generated through the bond sales would stay local within the Glendale Unified School District. There would also be an independent citizen oversight, which would be created, and mandatory annual audits, which would be performed to ensure the funds are spent properly. And finally, no funds generated through the sale of Measure S can be used for teacher or administrator salaries or other school operating expenses. At this time, GUSD is asking for the city's support for Measure S, and we have a number of individuals from the school district's administration here to answer any of the specific questions the council may have.
I have some cards. Let's go to the public, and then we'll bring it back to council. Robert Buniatian, followed by Harry Hall.
Good evening. My name is Robert Buniatian. I am a resident of Glendale. I'm here tonight to urge the council members to vote against the resolution, and the residents of Glendale to vote against Measure S. I urge the residents to defeat Measure S for the following reasons. According to the U.S. Census, the United States collected approximately $580 billion in taxes for education and spent close to $600 billion for the school year ending in 2008. California, combining federal, state, and local taxes, collected $72 billion. The per pupil expenditure in California is $9,863 per year, and in Glendale is $9,100 per year. This means a total of about $110,000 is spent educating a child in Glendale until they, until they hopefully graduate from high school. These numbers are mind-boggling, and the Measure S just adds to these numbers. We are lucky if we get a young man or woman graduating from high school that has a fundamental grasp of grammar, math, and science. However, by the time they graduate, whatever self-esteem they had going in as a child has been twisted and destroyed by government-run education. By the time students are out of primary education, entitlement mindset has been cemented. Their self-worth is wrapped around the idea that they deserve and are entitled to extort other people's property to pay for whatever their little hearts want. I'm here to say that no child has the right to education. No child deserves an education, especially when it involves extortion of private property from others. I'm here to say what, that what kids and their families deserve is the right to the optimal opportunity to earn an excellent education at the most affordable price, and this is what government-run education has completely destroyed. We should save kids from the tyranny of government-run education. Government-run education and its technocrats have become the masters rather than the servants of the education system. I advocate the residents of Glendale to vote down Measure S and think about the idea of absolute capitalism, capitalism of education governed by the laws of free and voluntary exchange. And when I introduce absolute capitalism of education, I mean just that, and not the existing crony capitalism that has given birth to so many ills of our times. Individuals that introduce this idea of an education system are based, are based, based on the free market enterprise are seen as radicals, insane, or out of their mind. But what is insane about it, and what is radical about it, I think it's insane that we spend $600 billion with the results that we have. Thank you.
You, Harry Hall, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, folks. Thank you for having us on your agenda. I'd like to urge your support to pass Measure S, what, that is on the April ballot. Everything that John said is what I was going to say. That was really good. Thank you. Measure S is a investment in our, from our local residents in our school facilities. We know that there's a correlation between great school facilities, great schools, and property values. This measure will do a lot for our city. It's going to put local folks to work right away. It's going to help maintain our school facilities to maintain your property values. It has fiscally conservative measures built into it, oversight built into it. The school district has a track record of bringing a project like this in under budget and on time with Measure K that was 13 years ago. So I'm, I urge you to support Measure S. You'd be joining a long list of growing supporters from Congressman Adam Schiff, Mike Gatto, the Glendale Chamber of Commerce, the Glendale Association of Realtors, many wonderful teachers are all supporters of Measure S. I'd like you to hear from two quick members of our committee. First, Elizabeth Manassari, and the president of the PTA.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. My name is Elizabeth Manassari, and I'm the president of Glendale Council PTA. And I'm very happy to announce that Glendale Council PTA has resolved to support Measure S. And on behalf of 12,400 PTA members and 25 units of PTA, I'd like to thank you for considering to approve, approve Measure S and support Measure S. Thank you very much.
That's great. I'd also like you to, thank you. I'd also like you to meet Louis Sad. Louis is a product of our Glendale schools and a product, a great story that I want you to hear about.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we all come here with a different reason for supporting Measure S, but, you know, my reason is one of being a product of the school system. I graduated not much more than nine years ago. In my short time in school, I saw tremendous change happen. I started my school writing with pen and pencil and researching in libraries because that was all that was available. I ended my school career in the 12th grade, researching on the internet and writing my papers on the computer, submitting them online to teachers in my short educational career, just to show you how quickly things are changing. So there's a tremendous value to increasing the amount of technology we're pumping into our schools to stay competitive, not only with our neighbors next door for jobs, but for our neighbors in other countries abroad. And finally, the last point I want to make is that, just to show you how quickly our school district has adapted, in 1997, as you all know, we passed Measure K. Measure K pumped money into our school districts. That was when I was in middle school, when that passed by 74%. In the time, from 97 to 2001, when I went to high school and graduated from high school, there had been a school-created Clark Magnet High School that I went to, that I graduated from, from 97 to 2001, and now I'm proud to own a technology business in Glendale, hiring students from our Glendale schools. So I've seen it come full circle. So we urge you to vote yes on S to the citizens, and we appreciate the resolution from the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know my time's up. Thank you. Also, from our school district, happy to have here Dr. Shehan and Eva Luke, Susan Hunt from our committee, Mary Boger, our co-chair, was just called away, so. Thank you for your support so far, and we urge you to pass this resolution.
You. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm here to speak about Measure S because our schools need the infrastructure and capital improvements in order to provide an environment for our students to be able to thrive. A lot of the money that goes into Measure S goes to retrofit, for example, the Hoover High School Auditorium, to retrofit it for purposes of earthquake prevention. A lot of the funds go to providing air conditioning. Many of the funds go towards replacing many of the bungalows and the portable classrooms that are in many, in many schools. I am familiar with those because my children went through many of the same Glendale schools that have been mentioned here, R.D. White, Wilson Middle School, Glendale High School. So my children went from kindergarten all the way through high school. But I want to say that we have to be wary of the overall burden that we have with regard to debt. The city of Glendale's debt, on the year 2000, went from $167 million to $469 million, according to the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, page 13. Today, you increased our debt by another 50 million. It is my hope that these funds used for Measure S are used for its intended purposes of capital improvement. Unfortunately, I find in some of the documents... The state of California is suffering at a significant burden caused in 1998 through the changes of the pension system that Governor Gray Davis afforded many of the state employees. That burden is now being borne by the schools, by the students, by the taxpayers. The city of Glendale also followed through with that policy in April of 2001 by copying the same type of pension increases to our fire police so that they can now earn 90% of the highest pay, increased yearly to the Consumer Price Index for the rest of their life. We can no longer support that type of pension obligation, either at the state level or at the local level. And we are turning more and more into increasing debt in order to support those obligations. We need to convey to the state of California, all the legislators, and to all the council members here, present and in the future, that we must control those burdens that are going to overburden the taxpayers now and into the future. We should not be using bond money to cover our daily expenditures. Thank you very much.
You. I don't have any other cards on this item. Weaver?
I don't know what that lecture had to do with Measure S overall. But thinking back, I'm a product of the Glendale school system. The whole way through, my father came here in the mid-1930s. One of the reasons he built a house here, Glen Oaks Canyon, was because of the school system. Remember going there? We didn't have air conditioning, and we didn't have fluorescent lights. I think we had some wall heaters to keep the room warm. The word "computer" didn't exist in the lexicon yet. I graduated from high school 54 years ago, way long back. Times have greatly changed. You know, and I came through the Glendale school system, and look at me today. I'm sitting on the city council. I guess the education did something for me. But it's a great thing. It's very clear it's for the facilities of the schools. And that's what it should all be used for, every single penny. A lot of the schools haven't changed very much over the decades that I've been going to them. So any little help that we can give is worth it. So I fully support Measure S, and I hope everybody in this city will. Thank you.
You. Mr. Drayman.
Well, Mr. Weaver, since it seems to be that you're talking about the Glendale schools, I'm also a Glendale native and also a product of the Glendale schools. So either they're doing a very good job, or they're going to be fenced off as a public nuisance, one of them. I'm the youngest of seven. We all graduated and attended the Glendale schools. Of course, the oldest, Mr. Mayor, we all graduated from Crescent Valley High. So we're not dynamiters, Mr. Weaver. We're Falcons.
Crescent Valley didn't exist when I went to school.
Except the oldest, who is a Hoover graduate. So we have one tornado in the family. And I guess in more ways than one. The Glendale schools were a great leveler for my family. They provided great opportunity and an opportunity to excel and to learn and to gain confidence. And so we are forever indebted to the Glendale schools, our teachers and administrators. I support this. And I think there's a lot of people approach me about it and say, "Are you supporting it?" Yes, I am. And before I can convince them, they're convincing me. They come up to me. So there is broad support for it. It is much like refinancing a loan. And I'd also just like to take one more minute. Mr. Sad was here speaking. You resemble your father so much, and I admire him so much. And having heard you speak there, everything that I've heard about you obviously is true. I fully expect to see you up here on this council dais in short order. So anyway.
You know, his wife has said no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Freedman?
Well, I didn't go to the Glendale schools. I didn't grow up here. But I do support Measure S. In fact, I've given them my endorsement to use as they please. So I'll support this today. Just one small editorial comment. There's been some letters in the newspaper criticizing people who don't support Measure S. And I know that it's something that's been discussed at the Candidates Forum for School Board. And I just wanted to point out that I'm very much in support of Measure S. But the people that aren't in support of it have their reasons, and they have some very rational and well-thought-out reasons. And I don't think that it's that one side is for the children and one side's not for the children. So I just hope that we keep that in mind when we go forward, that this is the kind of thing that reasonable people, I think, can disagree on. But it has my complete support in my vote, and I hope that it does pass, and I'm glad that council will be supporting this today.
You. Any other comments?
Would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
Move 8A1. 8A1.
8A1. There are second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Freedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you. Next item?
8B is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of two new employment classifications and titles to address operational and organizational needs in two separate city departments. B1 is Resolution Establishing Classification Titles and Compensation for Public Works and GWP-GMA.
Mr. Doyle.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you is an amendment to the Classification and Compensation Ordinance Resolution affecting management classifications. This action will establish two new classification titles within our list of classifications. Once again, I want to emphasize that tonight's action does not create new budgeted positions, but merely two new titles. These involve reallocations of existing budgeted positions. Each of these, I'll talk about them just briefly. One is in the Public Works Department. This would be a classification of Facilities Management Administrator. And this is as a result of a reorganization of the project management function within the Public Works Department, where essentially two positions are going to be combined into one overseeing both project management and facility services. The second is a position within Glendale Water and Power. It's the establishment of a Chief Assistant General Manager position. This would be essentially a single assistant department head for the general manager of Glendale Water and Power to really take charge of some of the important functions relating to the Water and Power Department, including smart grid, some of the energy marketing and trading, clean energy initiatives, and other areas. These items can be taken individually, or they can be taken together. With your approval tonight, would establish these two new titles within our classification and compensation resolution. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Also, Mr. Zern is here representing Public Works, as well as Mr. Steiger for Glendale Water and Power, if you have any specific questions.
I have a question. With regard to the first position at Public Works, there's a savings of $135,000 annually.
That is correct.
And with regard to the second position, what's the impact on the budget?
The second position creates a cost of about $20,000. And what that represents is a reallocation of one of the existing Assistant General Manager positions upward.
Not a creation of an entirely new position, but bumping up one of the?
That's correct. It's basically a trade-off of one of those AGM positions to a chief AGM.
I have a card, and then we'll come back to council for questions or comments. Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. In the past 10 years, we have seen a significant growth in the middle management of the city of Glendale's employment. Whenever there is a new position, I think that we should get an evaluation of the total number of managers vis-à-vis the rank and file. This particular position with regard to the Chief Assistant General Manager, I believe, would require a little bit of additional clarification for us. It sounds to me as if it is a $20,000 increase in pay, or is it a position that is being left over and then a new position obtained? I'm not too sure. Some of the functions that are being explained, I think, have merit. But I was wondering if the $20,000 is for the same person or a different person. Thank you very much.
Do I have any other cards? Get a clarification on the position. Is it something that was held over that we're just refilling or moving up? Is it one person that we have in mind?
It's a new classification, which would actually be a reclassification from an existing position of an individual into this position. And I believe the cost question, the comparison is done from top step to top step. Mr. Doyle, is that right? So whether the individual actually moves into the top step or not, I don't know.
That's correct. It's a comparison of the top step of the new classification and the top step of an existing Assistant General Manager classification. So as we fill this position, typically, we like to see an individual receiving a promotion get approximately 5% adjustment.
Which would not be the full amount. So what you'd find is the first fiscal year, you have probably got a 5% increase. This compares top step to top step, and it'll take some time for the individual to progress to the top step of the range.
I thought he's at top step.
Pardon me?
He said it's from top step to top step.
The cost comparison is from the top step of one range to the top step of another.
Not necessarily.
But as Matt notes, the individual, let's say they're at the top step of the old range, they would move 5% up into the new range, which wouldn't be the new top step. It would be about halfway or less to the top step. So it likely takes two years or more before somebody actually progresses to the top, and you incur the full cost.
Correct. Yes.
Mr. Quintero?
And how much will that be in terms of money? Just an estimate financially, how much that'll cost?
The immediate cost, I would have to estimate probably $10,000.
First year?
Correct.
And so we're talking about two positions, right? One in Public Works, one in GWP.
Yes.
Savings on one.
Yes, one in Public Works.
The second one in GWP would be an extra $21,000 a year.
That is correct.
One in Public Works actually has considerable savings.
But it won't be $21,000 the first year.
No. No.
How much will it be the first year?
$9,000, $10,000 the first year.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, then Mr. Drayman.
I was just going to move the motion.
Okay, well, hold off. Mr. Drayman.
Why?
On which?
Why on the GWP promotion?
This was a council--
Now, why don't we have Mr. Steiger come up?
Certainly.
Spot. Closer to it.
He's out of town.
Mayor Najarian, member of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Drayman, to your question. When I first came here three years ago, we had a position in GWP, which essentially was the second-in-command, essentially equal to the position that we're proposing tonight. At that time, I opted to reallocate that position downward in light of the fact that I felt I needed to get a better sense of what was going on at GWP at the time, to flatten the organization somewhat, and to look at how some of the more significant issues would play out as we move forward. During this three-year period, many of the issues have played out in a very significant way. Two issues that come to mind and that are focused here, but are only two, are our increase in energy trading and our very aggressive entrance into the wholesale energy field. We trade over $150 million worth of energy in a year. Also, the future of GWP, as we've brought forth in the past, is smart grid. Smart grid creates a whole new dimension of business strategy, one that we've not had up till this point. We need that because smart grid will start to open different areas from a technological and a business standpoint. So it's critical that we have now a position that has much more of a business focus. And what this does is this reestablishes what we already had three years ago at GWP.
Well, here's what I don't understand. We're not bringing in a new individual to do this trading. So how is the $20,000 extra a year for the existing person going to help him trade better?
It gives him a focus, or her, whoever it may be, a focus on a different vista. Right now, the way we operate at GWP, we have assistant general managers that are very, very focused in certain functional areas. The area of trading will still remain within this function. However, we're expanding the scope of this position, and we're pushing down some of the functionality of trading into the organization itself. We have expanded through reallocation over the last year, the trading organization. We've taken certain positions in GWP and reallocated them into the trading area. So we now have a broader base in trading, and we've pushed some of that decision-making there. But we still need a much higher level, which we've struggled, quite frankly, because of the lack of resources, to take a longer look at what we need to do from a business standpoint in trading. And also, we now are adding to that the entire area of smart grid, which we've never had before. This is brand-new.
Who is doing this now? I don't mean by name, but I mean what individual, what title is doing this work now?
Currently, the trading comes under our Assistant General Manager of Power Supply.
And so is that the individual that will be moving up?
Well, it could be. It will, you know, it's a reallocation. So it may very well be that we do a promotional allocation to make sure that we get the right individual in there.
Thank you.
Other comments?
So we can take these motions separately, is that correct? Public Works for one. I'd like to take them separately.
May I ask a question?
Freedman?
Does this new position have anything to do with succession planning?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Part of what we are doing at GWP is taking a longer look on developing our human resources within GWP so that as people move on, general manager, for example, that we will cultivate in GWP a general manager potential, which up till now, as you've known, general managers, for the most part, have come from outside. We are trying to, and this is one of the areas where we're looking to start to do succession planning. That's correct.
So right now, structurally, you don't have a -- and I'm asking this because I don't know. So I'm assuming that right now, without this change, you don't have a role that is the structural person that would be sort of the next step to the general manager position? And is that part of what this is supposed to create?
That is part of the developmental process in this position. That is correct.
So and without that, how does it work? You have several general managers of different divisions?
Yes.
And right now, you either hire someone from the outside? Not that we want you to leave. But assuming that you did leave, we would either have to choose from amongst several different employees that are all at the same level, without really knowing who the succession plan is supposed to be, or go to the outside?
That's correct. The succession plan right now does not identify any particular position. What this does is this starts to develop a position that has a broader scope, which is very, very important to the general manager position.
Mr. Drayman?
Okay, so now I'm confused. So I have to go back again. I'm sorry. So this was a $20,000 bump up in salary from an assistant position to a chief assistant, essentially?
Correct.
Right. And it was, a few moments ago, it was mostly about trade, this trading component?
And smart grid.
And smart grid.
Yes.
Now, it's also about succession planning, and that $20,000 is also somehow prepping somebody to have broader shoulders in that role as well.
Well, by nature of the position itself, it is a broader scope position than any of the assistant general managers we have. So that is correct, yes.
Okay. And that can't be done without that $20,000, is what I guess I'm getting at.
We have people in positions that are focused, and certainly, we can develop them to the extent that we can, and we do. But this gives a broader scope into one position. And based on many factors, not the least of which, the market, this is the salary level that it needs to be.
Got it.
Well, I guess that's sort of the big question, you know? To justify this, is the reason that there's this bump, I mean, obviously, the person's taking on more responsibility. But to me, that wouldn't be enough, you know, in this economy, to justify a raise like that. But if you're telling us that in this market, that we'd have trouble recruiting someone into that role or retaining them, that's a different, you know, that's sort of a different argument. So how does that pay scale for this position, how does it compare with other utilities?
The position that we're creating, that pay scale is approximately the same as the assistant general manager positions at our neighboring utilities. But this gives a broader scope into one position. And based on many factors, not the least of which, the market, this is the salary level that it needs to be.
Got it.
Well, I guess that's sort of the big question, you know? To justify this, is the reason that there's this bump, I mean, obviously, the person's taking on more responsibility, but to me, that wouldn't be enough, you know, in this economy, to justify a raise like that. But if you're telling us that in this market, that we'd have trouble recruiting someone into that role, or retaining them, that's a different, you know, that's sort of a different argument. So how does that pay scale for this position, how does it compare with other utilities?
The position that we're creating, that pay scale is approximately the same as the Assistant General Manager positions at our neighboring utilities. So actually, we're lower. We are lower pretty much across the board. So all this does is this brings a position higher than our normal Assistant General Manager, and at the level of what an Assistant General Manager would be in Burbank, for example. But that's not why we're, you know, we're not trying to create parity here. What we're trying to do is create a broader scope position, and then pay it at some appropriate level.
Mr. Weaver?
Well, I understand it. It may be $9,000, $10,000 increase. Impact on the budget this year, taking budget down $135,000, Public Works. And in my years here, I know I've sat through at least three heads of Water and Power, all recruited from the outside. Never yet been able to develop from within and promote upward somebody that may take over one day and knows the system from day one. Steiger had to come in and learn the system and try to maneuver and change it. We can grow one internally, which is a great motivational tool to anybody, to know, I can move up in line and maybe succeed one day as Water and Power Chief, and I know all the ropes. It makes a whole world of sense to me. So I fully support it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, well, for myself, I'm more interested in retaining our blue-collar rank-and-file employees than any particular manager. So I'll be voting against number two. Yeah, me. The savings at Public Works, combining the two management positions, I think that's a great idea. But we've just got too many things in GWP that need to be addressed in terms of employees, so I'm not going to vote for it.
Mr. Drayman?
I'm just going to make some comments now. I don't know if anybody else has questions. I didn't want to-
No, go ahead.
Mr. Steiger, stand there while I'm... Well, first of all, let's start with what I think is a positive. I think Glenn Steiger has been phenomenal for the city, and he's been phenomenal for this department. And I thank you for that. And although, from time to time, our views have not been in sync in terms of things like the most recent water rate increase issue and so on, and issues that relate to water transfers, perhaps, I think you've been extremely positive for this city and for our ratepayers, or this councilman in particular. However, although I support the first portion of this, Public Works portion, I believe, I think that's fantastic, and so we're saving some money. I also know that it's not hitched up here tonight with a $20,000 increase in promotion for, just out of the blue. They're hitched up tonight, so it appears to be a really great deal. I am mindful of the fact that we just unilaterally imposed on our largest employees' association a benchmark and a threshold that we felt we needed to do, our ratepayers felt we needed to do, and our voters. I understand, Mr. Weaver, and you're an engineer, and I have great respect for your opinion on these things, about growing an internal sort of second-in-command, if you will, should Mr. Steiger dap himself accidentally, something happens to him. I hope that doesn't happen. But my feeling is, if we're going to grow a new assistant chief, we should do it with a less expensive watering can. And so I won't be supporting that portion of this. Thank you.
Okay.
Want to separate it then?
Why don't we bifurcate it, separate it?
May I make a quick comment?
Go ahead.
Well, I certainly understand the reservations of my colleagues. This is a really hard time. We've frozen salaries. We're trying to reduce. I just talked a little bit earlier about the budget year, and, you know, when I was in Washington last week, it was interesting. Several of the congressmen said, you know, everyone used to make fun of California because California was in such bad financial shape, but now in Washington, we can't do that anymore because we're in worse financial shape. So it's bad. It's bad at the city level. It's bad at the state level. It's bad at the federal level. And we're all very conscious of that. At the same time, I also have to weigh being able to retain and develop the best people. And certainly, a lot of times, the higher up you go in the food chain, particularly in a technical operation like a GWP, where there's a lot of really specialized knowledge, that if you start losing the people that you've groomed and the people that are really the best at what they do, people that are trading $100 million a year in wholesale energy, you can really run into trouble. And so, you know, I have to wonder, is it better to save that $10,000 a year, or to get the best employee that we think we can get in that position? I don't think it's a trade-off between the blue-collar workers and management in this case. I think that's sort of a false dichotomy. I think we're all kind of on the same side, and I want the best guys out on the line and the best guys, you know, in trucks, as I do, running the utility. They're all just as important. It's just that for someone who's, you know, a trader and someone who's running the whole operation, it's a lot harder to find, you know, it's hard to find those people. So if what Mr. Steiger is telling us, that we cannot retain or attract the people that we really should have without this, that makes me very inclined to, you know, to want to vote for this. I know that the perception is not good. I worry about the public's perception. But at the same time, do we want the cheapest people we can get, or do we want the best people that we can get? And I think with a position like this, we want the best people we can get. So I'll be supporting this.
Drayman?
Well, I wasn't going to speak again, but I want to comment on the false dichotomy part. Let's be very, very frank, folks. Retaining people that we might go out and get, we're talking about an employee that's already on the books, folks. That's who we're talking about, not some dragnet we're going to cast out across the country to reel somebody in who isn't here. It's the person that's already here. And they're talking about bumping a salary, ultimately and realistically, by 20 grand a year. Yes, he'll be phased in initially, but it's 21 grand, 20, 21 grand a year. And it's for an individual that's already here and already doing this work. I understand. And if I were in Mr. Steiger's position as a responsible manager of this utility, I would be looking at the same things. And I know this requires some speciality here. But my goodness, we just spent the entire afternoon talking about the millions and millions and millions of dollars that are going to flow out of this city, most likely, as a result of the governor's plan with redevelopment, which is going to hit our general fund like a kidney punch, worse, like a blow in the gut. And I'm sorry, if retention of this individual amounts to a salary increase from 160 to 180 grand, while we're telling our rank-and-file, just sit tight, we'll get back to you, well, you know, let's wait a few years. Let's wait a couple of years. And let's keep a very close eye on Mr. Steiger so nothing happens to him in the meantime. I will personally carry you around on a pillow, Mr. Steiger, if that's what it takes. That, to me, is worth the $21,000 a year.
I got a question.
Well, let me make a comment myself. I've let everyone have a chance to talk. What I'm hearing is that we are taking someone who has a certain set of responsibilities and placing upon him greater responsibilities, greater responsibilities that can have far-reaching impacts in terms of the financial ramifications. Now, I think whenever we do that, whenever we take an employee at whatever level, be at blue-collar level, be at executive level, and we give them greater responsibilities with a lot of money riding on that, that they're certainly entitled, I think, to a different classification, if it's greater and wider in terms of the scope, as well as a greater range of pay. And that's how I see it. I don't know who's leaving. I don't know who's coming. I'm not playing that, I'm not privy to those maneuverings, believe it or not, despite being mayor. I don't know who's coming or who's going. I know there's a lot of emails out there, former employees, former power station workers who think they know what's going on. I haven't received any of those, though I get word of that secondhand. But what we have is someone who is getting greater responsibilities over a wider scope of jurisdictional areas and a bump up in pay. I mean, that's what I see, and I, you know, for me, that would lead me to approve this position. If it's the same work, no. If it's not greater scope of responsibilities, no. But only if it's a greater scope of responsibilities in two of the most important areas, which I see are the energy trading, as well as the implementation of our smart grid. And there's a lot of money invested in our smart grid, 50 million or more. And should that go wrong, should that go sideways, we're going to have a lot of explaining to do, especially to the federal government that gave us about 30 million of that, 50 million.
Ms. Friedman?
Well, all I can say is, if all of Glendale Water and Power rests on this person's back, boy, we're in trouble. I mean, aren't there other engineers? Aren't there other managers? Steiger's doing a great job. This person is, as I read it, this person is already involved in energy marketing, trading, and also smart grid technology, so he's doing the job, or she's doing the job. I just don't see it. Financially, we're not, it's only 20,000. Gee, that's nothing compared to the overall budget, but doesn't make any sense. You just have too many issues in GWP, GWP having to do with employees, and I'm just not going to bump up someone's salary to the tune of 20,000 a year, so.
That's good for me.
Well, I just don't understand the overall policy then, because, and forgive me for using this example, but late last year, Ms. Beers, who's our Assistant City Manager, went from one position to another position. She took on a much bigger responsibility, and as such, she was given a pay raise because she moved into a bigger position. Why? Isn't that sort of the same thing that we're talking about here? We're talking about a reclassification. I don't know whether it's one person moving into, we're not, like you said, Mr. Mayor, we're not just giving someone a raise arbitrarily. We don't even know if it's someone who's coming from the inside or from the outside, but we're creating a new job classification that would be the number two under Mr. Steiger, someone that could move into that position eventually, and someone who has a bigger responsibility. So to say we want to have that position, which I haven't heard anyone say we don't want that position, but we don't want to pay any more than a regular general manager, you know, that doesn't make sense to me either.
Mr. Weaver?
We operate in a civil service system in this city, just like I did with the federal government. Job descriptions are written, and there's certain criteria within the job descriptions that determine what level that person is going to work at. As you move up, you have a broader job description, more responsibilities, maybe managing more people. But it has to be justified by a job description, in this case, apparently it exists, to put a person into that. It is broader. It is a civil service system appointment.
Okay. Well, why don't we move these one at a time?
Bifurcate it? Okay, I'd like to move 8B1A.
8B1, and what I'm hearing is, let's start with, for the Facilities Management Administrator, page 10 of the resolution.
That's it. That's my motion. Roll call, please. Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Caro?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Njarion?
Yes.
I'd like to move 8B-
8B1 with the Chief Assistant General Manager on page nine of the resolution.
That's it.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilmembers, Drayman?
No.
Friedman?
Yes.
Caro?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Njarion?
Yes.
You?
Resolution passes.
Next item?
8C is Director of Human Resources regarding amendments to civil service rules and regulations. 8C1 is a resolution amending rules and regulations.
Mr. Doyle?
I broke the mic.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution amending the civil service rules and regulations. This is the culmination of about two and a half years of work by staff, as well as your appointees, to the Civil Service Commission. Civil service rules are provided for in the charter, and essentially, they govern all the employment-related functions which operate within our environment, within our work environment. Items such as the hiring, testing, examination, selection, classification, as well as discipline, and the appeals thereof are all governed by the civil service. We have a total of 22 individual amendments being proposed tonight involving various sections, various chapters of these rules. Civil Service Commission, back in September, and over a series of several meetings, went through each of these proposals, each of the amendments, painstakingly. And we've come up with the list here that we're having brought before the City Council The objectives overall were to improve efficiencies within the rules, also to make sure there's better clarity, as well as to ensure that all of the rules are up to date with the latest legal ramifications. Exhibits before you, there are essentially two exhibits before you tonight in addition to the resolution. The first is Exhibit 1, which is a summary of all the proposed changes, and that's, again, each of the 22 are listed. And then Exhibit 2 is the actual document itself. With that, be happy to answer any questions, or, you know, it's somewhat of a lengthy document to go through. I'd be happy to go through it or answer your questions, however you'd like to proceed at this point. Amending these rules requires both approval from the Civil Service Commission as well as the City Council.
I have a question. These were developed and brought forth with, through the meet-and-confer process with every management, every labor group?
Mr. Mayor, that, yes.
Are you all on the same page with all these? Is everyone-
Very much so.
Happy with that?
I will say, we probably started out with about 28 to 30 initial amendments, and through that process, we narrowed it down to the 22. And the Commission did, in fact, affirm these 22 unanimously with the support of the employee associations.
Okay. Sounds like you spent some time working through it, and that certainly makes it easier for us.
Two years.
We appreciate that. I don't have any cards on this. Are there any questions from council?
Make a motion.
Okay, let's hear your votes.
Move 8C1.
There's no other comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Caro?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Njarion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Next item?
8D is Director of Community Development regarding addition of one senior building code specialist to community development, building, and safety. At D1's motion approving the addition of one building code specialist position, improving the adjustment to the building and safety budget to cover associated costs in connection to the additional position. At D2 is a resolution appropriating $54,261 to provide funds for salary and benefits.
Okay. Mr. Hagani?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you remember, one of the reasons that you combined several divisions under the current Community Development Department was to streamline the permit process and have all of the permit processing under one roof, so we could make sure that every project that comes to the city, quote, unquote, "from cradle to grave," would be expedited and processed in the same manner. And in doing so, we have been looking at our procedures and several steps that are taken for every permit process, and we have identified one area that we think that we have a weakness. And it's particularly in the face of the current economic uptick that we know that there are developers out there who are interested in investing. And one of the important aspects that makes our city competitive with other cities is our ability to expedite the permit and plan check process. We have also been getting a lot of requests from potential developers who have asked if we can offer them expedited permit process, expedited plan check, which they're more than willing to pay for. Oftentimes, expedited plan check is two and a half times the cost of the regular plan check, and the developers are more than willing to pay for that. We have not been able to offer that because of the workload of the department and the workload of the plan checkers. And we're, quite frankly, understaffed in order to offer that permit, and that is costing us something in our competition. us something in our competition with other cities to attract development. Recently, we had one developer who asked us to, you know, and proposed the challenge that we do this process of their plan check in a timely manner, and we committed to that, and Mr. Stuart Tom, our building official, managed to move some things in his division to expedite that, the process, and as a result of it, we got upwards of $1 million in worth of plan check review that we got from this particular project, which otherwise we wouldn't have been able to do. But it really cost our division, our plan, our Building and Safety Division, quite a bit of maneuvering to do this. So what we're proposing tonight is to, is the addition of a senior building code specialist, senior, yes, to the planning, to the Building and Safety Division. We think, we know that this position will pay for itself already with the adoption of the Cal Green Code. You authorized us to increase the surcharges for that particular part of the code by 15%. That, we know, based on our calculations, pays for this position already, and we think that with the expedited plan check review that the developers have told us they're willing to pay, we, the position pays for itself. With that in mind, we're proposing that you approve this and you make adjustments to the Building and Safety Division's budget for this year so that we could go ahead and hire someone and maintain our competitive edge. Mr. Tom is here, who has prepared the staff report and who can talk about the mechanics of how he organizes the work program in the Building and Safety Division for any questions you may have.
Mr. Quintero?
My question is about the Cal Green. Is this person, whether it's someone in-house or go out, find someone, will it be someone that is going to focus on and know about the Cal Green standard?
Yes, I think everybody, Mr. Tom is also ready to answer, but I think everybody in our Building and Safety Division will be implementing Cal Green, but Cal Green is adding to our workload, and that is why we are actually adding the surcharge to implement.
That's what I'm asking. So this, but everyone is going to be cross-trained, then?
Exactly.
It's not that this person is going to be the Cal Green expert?
This will not be the only Cal Green.
That answers my question. Keeps Mr. Tom away from the microphone.
Great.
I do have a card from Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I would like to ask if this particular position, as it appears to me, is aimed at taking care of the additional uptick in activity that is taking care of planning. Under those circumstances, the position is justified. But if you look at the past 10 years, and you look at the building trades, generally you find this upticks and downticks as more development comes up and comes down according to the economy. So it is my belief that the city perhaps should be staffing according to its minimum expected level of development, and then maybe hire on an hourly basis for those individuals. So the question here is, is this position a permanent position? Is it an hourly position? Or is this a position that could be farmed out until the activity tapers down in case the economy goes down? Thank you.
Would you like to answer any of those questions, Ms. Milano?
To the mayor's desire, I'll answer the question.
Permanent position?
It's a permanent position.
And?
Cal Green.
It's Cal Green and the ability to offer expedited plan check.
For which we're charging?
For which we will charge the developers directly.
Enterprise position.
Comments?
Just a quick question. It's a little bit off-topic, but I had a request from one of our builders in town for an expedited design review process, to which he said that, you know, he and his friends would be willing to pay, you know, a large surcharge for. So I would like at some point for us to look into that.
Actually, I have received that same request. We are looking at a comprehensive fees study with the finance department, and as we bring that particular comprehensive fees analysis, which covers not only our department, all the departments, we're going to bring some ideas regarding to that particular request to you when it comes.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Weaver?
Move 8D1.
I can.
Roll call, please.
Wait, is that 1 and 2?
And there's an amendment to 8D1. There's just some extraneous paragraph. I think the motion that it pulled up was, had some extraneous language involving the execution of an agreement with the City of Los Angeles. That should be stricken from this motion.
8D1 as amended.
As amended, and then 8D2 is a resolution.
2.
Second. I can.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Next item?
Next item, Mr. Mayor and council, is City Clerk regarding promotional efforts for the April 5, 2011 municipal election. At 8D1 is a motion to note and file report. This was a report that we discussed two weeks ago to bring to you, to bring to light some of the promotional efforts that we've done through our offices, to raise awareness in the public that there is an election, a municipal election, that is being held on April 5, 2011, Tuesday. Polls open at 7:00 a.m., close at 8:00 p.m. And the report outlines some of our efforts. I can go through a brief visual presentation as well, and on the screen, actually, you see some of the fine work that our graphics, or actually GTV 6 Department has done as well. Mr. Mayor and council, for the upcoming elections, some of the efforts that we have and that have been outlined in the report to you are inserts and newspaper advertisements that have gone into for language newspapers. We have English newspapers, adjudicated city newspaper, as well as a weekly newspaper. We have them in Korean, Spanish, and Armenian language publications as well. In addition, a new effort this year is a beeline bus promotional cards, and we thank Public Works for their assistance with the placement of these cards. Just in the March, a month of March, there's approximately a 250,000 ridership figure that we received from Public Works. We hope that this will get the message out as people ride the beeline bus, most of them being residents of Glendale or people who do shopping and carry out their business within the city will be able to see these reminders. Also, we have multi-language posters in storefront windows that we have detailed there on the slide as well. Along Brand Boulevard, you can see here the poll banners. Credit to this idea must go to the city manager, who saw them in other cities, was kind enough to allocate the resources in order to place them throughout the city. We see them along Broadway. We also have banners along Wilson, the intersection of Wilson and Glendale, as well as on top of City Hall. These are banners that were used in the previous election, and we've recycled them, of course, changing the date. Banners, as well as light post banners over the pedestrian bridge leading to Glendale Community College, as well as in the Montrose area, Kenneth Village. This is a couple of photos of our election center, which is a conversion of the Glendale Police Department Community Room. This is the election center. It gives you an idea. Once we are open and once we are distributing ballots early next week, you will be able to come in and see the operations there in full swing. And in addition to other election outreach efforts, some of the groups and organizations that we've already met with, a presentation was made to the Glendale Bar Association last week, presentations to Kiwanis Rotary, to Glendale Community College, various high schools. These photos were taken just today at our public library, our central library, where there's a course taught by Elizabeth Gregorian to Armenian speakers, limited English proficiency individuals who are learning how to use computers and the Internet. And the presentation that you see me making in this photo is about our glindelvotes.org website, which has information on there in Spanish, Armenian, Korean, as well as in English, and encouraging people who aren't fluent English speakers or understand the language that they can still use the Internet to receive the information that they need. And those are just some of our efforts. The rest are outlined in the report, and we'd be happy to answer questions.
Weaver?
Yes, Artie, when is a sample ballot going out?
Sample ballot will go out this Thursday.
Thursday, so anybody that wants to vote by mail, there's a absentee ballot application on the back of the sample ballot. Expect to receive it by the weekend, I guess, and when must they be back in to city? What's the cutoff?
For the absentee, for the vote-by-mail request cards, those must be in seven days before the election. They must be in a week.
So you haven't got long. If you get it and you want to vote by mail, then get that request in immediately. You only have, what, about 10 days? And then we heard about the...
I believe the date, I can get you the exact date, I believe it's March 29.
Okay, so you can submit up for that time.
By March 29.
And then I learned a week ago, I guess, from Ms. Friedman, about the emergency absentee ballot process. If you're out of the precinct, out of town, something, and you weren't able to turn in the absentee ballot?
Disabled.
Or disabled, you can go to the election center. That's the only place you can go, right, Artie?
Yes.
No place else. You've got to go straight down to the police building, and you can get an emergency ballot at that point and vote right there.
And they do have to appear because they have to fill out some?
Right. You have to appear. Don't go to a poll and expect them to do that. I just learned that today.
Mr. Drayman?
Yeah, this year I noticed that none of the materials have the actual date, which just says seven days prior to the election. The reason we didn't put the 29th on anything? I mean, I asked that very question when we, when this was addendized, and actually, the answer to my question that I was given, when I said, isn't it the 29th? I was told, no, it's the 21st. I think that's the cutoff for registration.
Yes.
But, but we were told, or the public was told, the 21st at that time. But the date, the 29th, doesn't appear on anything, and I'm just curious about that.
Well, I would actually direct you to our elections website that has an important dates...
I mean, the materials themselves. I mean, you would think that if you have a cutoff to return, to tear something off, fill it out, and send it back by the 29th, it would say, return this by the 29th, particularly when we've had a very slow start to even letting people know when the election is. That was, that was my point.
I'll double-check the vote-by-mail request card that was prepared by, but I don't know why it didn't say it. We did review it, it may have been omission, but I don't think so.
And as I understand it, with the emergency vote, absentee, you can basically walk in and say, my arches hurt, and, and, you know, I mean, I don't think we're shaking anybody down. You could say, my knee hurts. Nothing hurts. I just, I'm here.
They just have to fill out the box and check, check the form, and we don't look behind that to determine if somebody, it's, they're signing it under penalty of perjury. But as you point out properly, Councilmember Drayman, we don't look behind the statement or the checkbox on the form.
Hey, any other comments?
For information, right?
Report and file, receiving. No objections?
To add that, personally, I found the wrap ad very effective. As much as I don't like those, and I tend to take them right off and throw them away when they're on the LA Times, I found it very effective the way it was laid out. I was just mentioning to you, Asman, as we, because we'll be doing more promotion. I think it would merit having something like that for this whole timeframe on the absentee ballots, because there does seem to be a very short timeframe to get back the application, and then you have about seven days to get people the actual absentee ballot and then get it back again. That just seems like a very short timeframe. So if people aren't really paying attention, then they'll either miss getting the application in, or they'll miss filling out their ballot and getting it back in, in a period of time. That may be something we'll want to have a special public, bit of a public campaign, whether it's a wrap or something else, to highlight that as well.
Are these timeframes the same as they've been with other elections?
Yes.
They're all the same, right? Nothing's changed in terms of...
No, it has not.
Drayman?
Couple other things I forgot. I wanted to also compliment the city clerk on the wrap. I thought that was terrific, and because the copy, the main copy is so simple, you know, pick up the paper, you don't have to hunt for it. There it is. That was great. Also, the use of the Thursday folders. Fantastic idea, and I understand we're going to be doing that again sometime March. Another great idea. One other question about the banners. I was told that we'd be putting something up in the Chryscenta Valley, Foothill Boulevard. I mean, we have 10,000 residents up there. Are we going to include them in this process of banners and poll banners and all of that?
My understanding, there were to be banners put up at Foothill Boulevard.
Yeah, I just left them in the slides. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, there were. We didn't, we weren't able to get to all the places we want to take pictures from, but they, they should be up. If they aren't, people can call us, and we'll make sure that they are up.
Told, I'm told they're up.
Great.
And also, I did want to direct, I know that if the issue is a matter of date, we go by the California Elections Code. I do want to point out one thing on our website. This is a Glendale Votes website. When you do go to the vote-by-mail, it states right there, voters who wish to vote by mail must submit a written request for a ballot no later than seven days prior to Election Day. Again, that is language from the California Elections Code. We can add the date in there, designating what that seven days prior is, but in addition to this section, there is also a detailed public service announcement as to how to vote by mail, and that is also being done in multiple languages. It has been very successful in the past in showing that people receive the proper information and instruction on how to vote, how to request those cards and submit them. And given our statistics that have been increasing of people voting by mail, I believe the message is getting through to voters.
Any other comments? It's a motion to note and file with no objections.
Need a motion?
So, no objections. Next item, please.
Next item, we return to oral communications. Discussion is limited time, is not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. Michael Earl, followed by Robert Phillips.
Hello, City Mayor and councilmen, city manager. My name is Michael Earl. I am an employee in the Water Department at the Glendale Water and Power. We are all here today to ask that the city manager comply with his commitment to quickly render a decision regarding our rights to vote for representation and what classes are appropriate for our bargaining unit. We have been patient and kept our commitment to the City of Glendale. We will not waver from our mission. We have been misrepresented in our wages, benefits, working conditions for much too long. We have been granted and participated in a hearing that was supposed to result in a fair and neutral vote. If we prove that a majority of the membership was in favor of a vote, we have proved all that has been asked. We have followed your guidelines and requests. We are patiently awaiting for your response. We have kept our commitment. We ask that you respect our wishes and keep your commitment. Thank you.
You, Robert Phillips.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council members, my name is Robert Phillips. I'm a second-generation electrical line mechanic for Glendale Water and Power. I have been an employee for the city for the past 20 years, the last 10 of it with Glendale Water and Power. This has been an honor for me, and I would not have it any other way. I've always been proud of this, and I've always felt a strong sense of family at work. I believe this is not always the case outside of our city. In the last few years, we've been ignored by our representation, and we have had no voice. I would like to believe that the City Council values our opinions and would listen to our issues. The issues of representation has gone on much too long. We have been told that we are family here. You have the chance to prove it. Please give us the respect that we are due and the vote that most of our members are asking for. Thank you.
If there are no other speakers from the workers here, if you hold on, I'll let the city manager give a brief response, if you'd like to, to the question.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. And I spoke to the gentleman out before the meeting, and will say, the responsibility rests squarely with me. We did have our hearing in mid-January. We set out a process for addendums, closing, briefs to be filed. Frankly, we were still receiving through, addendums through the latter part of February. As you know, we've been very busy here, so I committed to the gentleman outside that I'll have a tentative ruling issued by the end of next week. They'll then have a period of time to respond to that, then there'll be a final ruling, so we'll make sure this moves along. Gentlemen, I appreciate your patience.
Barry Allen, followed by Lynn Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen. It was interesting listening to the presentation regarding plan checking. And I'm just curious as to whether or not Mr. Drayman had that expedited plan checking. It's interesting that on first week of January this year, I filed a complaint with Neighborhood Services about no building permit for Mr. Drayman's condominium. And on January 13th, Mr. Engel said it was under investigation. And on January 27th, was that expedited building permit. It was applied for and received on the same day. And now, of course, it's out of Mr. Engel's hands. It's in Stuart Tom's hands. That's where the, that's where the buck is at today. But what's going to happen with it? During the period of time, and the, from January thereabouts of 2010 to mid-December of 20, January 2010 to mid-December of 2010, there was all sorts of construction going on in Mr. Drayman's condominium. He acknowledged that in a LA Times article. So we know that. And he also said, you know, "My friend, Kachik Zargarian," who I've known for a long time. In fact, Mr. Drayman has breakfast with him quite frequently. And he didn't know that his good friend, Kachik Zargarian, Mr. K., worked for ADI, a vendor to the city, the affordable housing vendor. He didn't know that. And then he didn't know when Mr. K. was fired. And then he didn't know. All of a sudden, Mr. K. is now working for National Fire, a contractor to ADI. And Mr. Drayman had a lot of work done. Now, what I'm going to do is, I'm not going to bore you with a lot of this, but I'm going to put up a couple of these nice photographs that you've seen before. Here's a photograph showing the, this shows the building plan. Now, you'll see here, there is one window that was to have been replaced. Now, we heard last week from Mr. Drayman's advocate, Mr. ...
I can't hear that.
Okay. From Mr. Drayman's advocate, Mr. Weaver, we heard, we heard about that, that this was in common, in a common area, right? Well, okay, if it's in a common area, why did he bother getting a permit for that? Now, we know, we've heard Mr. ...
Don't bother the speaker, Mr. Mohill.
With all that pre-modality, you would think that the camera system would be able to creep around a little bit, but, okay, good. All right. Okay. But the, Mr. Drayman, we have heard him speak about vinyl windows. And so let's look at some of the vinyl windows. Here's, here's another one, Mr. Mohill. There's two vinyl windows, two sliding door windows. No permits. Oh, well, it's Homeowners Association. Guess what? Unless they had an expedited permit just recently, there were no permits for the Homeowners Association. Wow! Then, of course, to, to sort of put this in a perspective, here he is looking through the front door. Do my God, look at that, another vinyl window. Now, there can only be five sets of them going in, and here you'll see the old window. And here's a brand-new window. So does this expedited plan checking have anything to do with that? Now, this, all this work was done by National Fire before they had a general contractor's Class B license, which they got upon the conclusion of the construction at Mr. Drayman's condominium. Now, we're going to hear the parade of people, "Oh, Barry Allen's a bad guy," and Dave Weaver is going to stand there and sit there, rather, and say, "Well, he'll walk out before the meeting's over." Well, Miss Weaver, so do you. But the other thing is, I don't get $40,000 a year to sit here and pontificate. I'm Barry Allen. I'm with Vanguardians. Thank you very much.
Mr. Najarian, before Mr. Barry Allen leaves, Silverman leaves, let me ask him once again, I wrote this last week, and I actually wrote it months ago, "Please clear your name and your associate's name, Mr. Allen. The Thompsons are here in the City Hall. The Thompsons have never received an answer to their questions. You solicited money for their legal defense, although they didn't know about it or didn't ask you to do so, but they have no idea about the outcome. How much money did you receive? You've been stonewalling all the inquiries, you talk about transparencies, but you won't let the public know the results of your fundraising activities supposedly on their behalf."
Is that a rhetorical question? Is this a debate?
No, let me finish, and I'll let you respond.
Is this a debate or a dialogue? If it's a debate or a dialogue, it does not belong in, under the ground.
Hold on. Wait. I'm going to have you removed if you don't get away from the mic. So please provide an accounting, please provide an accounting for your nonprofit Vanguardians. It's been operating for years. All I've asked for, and members of the public, is for you to publish a list of the names and the amounts that have gone into that account, and a list of the checks that were written with the names in the account. Very simple. You just look. Here's where I got the money, and here's what I did with the money. We've never had it. In all of these years, all of the talk of transparency, Barry Allen Silverman has never, ever given the public an accounting of his so-called nonprofit. I'll expect an answer next week. I haven't gotten one in a few years now, but I never give up trying.
No, gentlemen, it's not a back-and-forth. Unless you'd like to bring him to the podium, too.
Oh, will he answer the questions? I don't think he's talking.
Is he allowed to answer? I thought counsel may question the speaker, but no debate shall, blah, blah, blah.
Counsel may question the speaker, the mayor may want to question the wisdom of that procedure, but the counsel does want to call up first.
Well, he's left the chambers. He's left the chambers. He doesn't want to answer the, doesn't want to answer the questions. The question is moot. That's right.
The question is moot. Although I encourage you gentlemen to speak off the record after the meeting, if you so desire. Or, of course, Mr. Allen is welcome next week to, to come forth with the information you requested. Lynn Myers, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, councilmembers and staff. My name is Lynn Myers. I am here this evening to update on an issue concerning an old con man by the name of Mr. Barry Silverman, also known as Mr. Barry Allen. Previously, I brought this issue to your attention during oral communications at the June 22nd, 2010 council meeting. To refresh everyone's memory, in 2007, Barry Allen, through his outfit Vanguard, set up a defense fund for Mr. and Mrs. Thompson in defense of a slap suit. He alerted the public to this fact in his newsletter, and here in these chambers at a city council meeting. Right here at this podium, he scammed the public for money. I was one of his victims. I contributed to this fund, and I learned a full year after the fact that Barry Allen had not turned over one cent to the Thompsons. It was only after a great deal of prodding that the old con man finally acknowledged those contributions that the Thompsons had become aware of. He also informed them that he was entitled to a cut. In a letter to them, he stated the amount he would turn over after deducting his cut. But he failed to turn over that amount, neither to them nor to his attorney. There is no way of knowing how much the old con man actually collected, because he has never been open and transparent. And it would be very difficult to get to the bottom of it based on his various accounts and the names he uses, not to mention his numerous addresses as he moves about from rental to rental. There is no way of knowing. Did I cover that? I would like to inform you this evening, I have learned from the Thompsons, who are here in the audience tonight, that this money has never been turned over. As I watched the televised council meeting last week, I was appalled to see the old con man swagger to this podium once again and spew forth fabricated and malicious allegations against you, Mr. Drayman. The good part is knowing he didn't get away with it, and the orchestrated setup with Channel 11 backfired big time. Apparently, it didn't take long for them to realize they too had been sucked in by the old con man. There is one thing you could never accuse him of, and that is lack of pure gall, as once again, he boldly swaggered up here tonight with more of the same. A con man is a con man is a con man. And yes, I was scammed by Mr. Barry Silverman, also known as Mr. Barry Allen. I hope that this will be a wake-up call to the good people of Glendale, to be on guard and beware of the old con man, Barry Allen, and his cohorts. Thank you.
I have a question for the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Contare.
I don't remember, to tell you the truth, but I believe you once stated that, in fact, the check that you sent to Barry Allen, to Vanguardians on behalf of the Thompsons, that it wasn't cashed by Vanguardians, by some other entity or down in Orange County, or...
No, actually, I charged my contribution to my bank card, and it showed up on my statement under the name 50/50 Leadership. A check that he issued to the Thompsons for a small part of what he owed them was drawn on a Bank of America account in Huntington Beach. I believe the name on that account was the initials CBN or OBN with a post office box address in Huntington Beach.
Right, that's something other than Vanguard.
It was a, it was a, it was a bank in Huntington Beach with a post office box address in Glendale.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Mohill, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian and councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill, candidate for Glendale City Council. Public housing and ADI. Councilmembers, the current federal investigation of Advanced Development Investment, also known as ADI, the Glendale low-income housing developer accused of fraud and corruption charges makes everyone think about two kinds of abuses. The first one, as reported in the newspapers, the campaign contributions, many of them received from Mr. ADI himself, tens of thousands of dollars. The second, the private arrangements from some of you may be making with ADI for your own private gains. The solution of the first abuse is stricter campaign contribution limits and disclosure of campaign contributions at the time an agenda item comes before the city council. We could also demand the council members calendar these appointments with anyone doing business with the city. And these meetings be placed on the Internet for everyone in the public to view. The second abuse, a private arrangement such as those by Mr. Drayman for the renovation of his condo, or for the arrangements by Mr. Weaver for the Royal Palace banquet hall a few years ago. We need an ethics law that would fine $1,000 for each occurrence and a city attorney elected by the people, by popular vote. We need an independent city attorney, not one who will use the city's money to defend misdeeds of the city council members, his bosses. According to the most recent real estate trends in the City of Glendale, an apartment unit now sells for about $200,000 per unit. But the money we spend for low-income housing is as follows in the case of ADI. For the Metropolitan Lights, City Lights in 2005, the city paid $320,000 per unit. For the Metro Loma Housing Project in 2007, the city paid $444,000 per unit. For the Glendale City Lights Project in 2008, the city paid $507,000 per unit. We allow public housing costs at more than twice the market value. And then we have councilmen, councilmembers, excuse me, getting either campaign contributions or huge personal gifts from the developer. Some members of the public are blinded when they say, "We do not need any city watchdogs." Our five councilmembers and staff are not working for the stakeholders and the voters who put them in office. One councilmember recently called a certain city watchdog and a talk dog for telling the truth. Today, it seems many concerned citizens think our elected officials care more about receiving campaign contributions and etc. Elected officials care more about receiving campaign contributions from well-connected developers, or having said developers do a condo makeover. There are many, many struggling families today in our jewel city. Approximately 17% of the public is unemployed, looking for work. Are councilmembers above the law, I ask? We must restore the public trust. My name is Mike Mohill, candidate for Glendale City Council.
Margaret Hammond, Dr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask you for the same indulgence, since Mr. Mohill usually leaves the room at this point. And I want to respond to a couple of things before he does, and I don't want to be accused of, of doing this behind his back. Matter of fact, I want him to be here. First of all, our last meeting was referenced by one of the speakers. I'm a native of this city. I've grown up here, and as many of you who know me know, I'm the youngest of seven, and that my father, who was a parking commissioner in the city, among other things, believed in city service and was determined one of his children was going to be interested in city service as well. So he started bringing me down here to council chambers when I was five. And I've got to tell you, although the room looks different, and although the way we do things is more formal now, I've got to tell you, this is the most appalling, disgusting city council campaign I have ever seen. I've seen all of them, all of them since about 1963, anyway. And the reason it's different is because it's not about issues, at least for one candidate. It's not about issues. It's not about policy. It's not about a vision for the city. It is about slander. It's about libel. And it's about, as he puts it, ethics, right? Character, right? So first of all, I just want to comment, one of the appalling things, Mr. Mayor, was that last week, among the things that Mr. Mohill accused me of, was he compared me to Adolf Hitler at the podium here. And any of you that were here saw that, which is particularly interesting for someone like me, who, whose mother was a, family was, were Holocaust survivors. I find that particularly offensive. I find that speaker particularly offensive. that particularly offensive. I find that speaker particularly offensive, and I wonder, Mr. Mayor, what the reaction in this room would have been, what kind of a seatbelt we would have had to buckle you into if a candidate for council had come to this microphone and accused you, or accused Mr. Kasakian, or Mr. Taktalian of being an Ottoman Turk. That's what you are. I have a feeling that you would have been interested in leaping over this dais. You wouldn't have, because you're a gentleman, but I think you would have wanted to. But no one said a word, except for some people out in the audience. But I want to come back to Mr. Mohill for a moment and answer some of his questions. He has this flyer that he puts out there, and the only thing I'm going to refer to on it is where he talks about character and ethics, ethics and character of the council member, of the candidates. And he refers to me, and he says I'm under investigation by, and as he hands it to people, he tells them, one after the next, that I'm under investigation by federal authorities, that I'm under investigation by the district attorney. Now, it doesn't matter that that's not true to him, and it doesn't matter that he's making it up out of whole cloth. So today, and what he tells people is, he read it in the LA Times. He includes the article, and he underlines some things. So I thought I'd call the paper. And so I emailed Dan Evans today, and I said, please show me, because I can't seem to find it, where in the news press article, or the news press joint article with the LA Times, where it says I'm under federal investigation, or whether, where I'm under investigation by the district attorney, or investigation by anybody, well, other than Barry Allen. And Dan's response to me was, not a word of that that I can find either. And then he asked if I would be good enough to give him a copy of this. Well, I want to address the character issue. Let me make sure I have this character stuff right, okay, Mr. Mohill? Let me just make sure I dialed it in right. Character of the candidate matters, and telling the truth matters. And I think we like pictures too, don't we? That seems to be the case. Let me see now. Okay. Mike, you said that you started coming here because of the tree ordinance. Got me thinking about, what's so special about the tree ordinance with you? So I did a little looking in the public record. Here's what I found. Are we aware that in December of 2006, according to the public record, Mr. Mohill was arrested? Convicted! Arrested and convicted of what? Trespass. Interesting, huh? He was also arrested, but the charges were dismissed of hacking up a protected oak tree in his neighbor's yard. Could I see the photo, please? Also public record. This is Mr. Mohill in his yard, right? Let's see the close-up. Here he is hacking the limb, and this is how they arrested him, or took him into custody. They didn't actually arrest him. This is how they charged him. This is how they proved it, because a neighbor across the street photographed him hacking up his neighbor's protected oak tree. Why? Because the limb overextended his yard, a limb, and he hacked it up when he thought the neighbor was away. He got caught, he got charged, he got convicted, and I'm going to make as part of the public record, this report I pulled off of the Internet that show those two counts, those two charges, the one that he was found guilty and convicted of was trespassing. But it gets better, because we're talking about truth, Mr. Mohill, we're talking about character, Mr. Mohill, we're talking about ethics, Mr. Mohill. So I looked in the LA record as well. Mr. Mohill's a busy man, and he wasn't just busy in Glendale, because in 1987, but he's not going to tell you this, in 1987, he was also arrested, but this time the charge was something called a 647A. Anybody know what that is? Do you know what that is? Oh, I'm sure you're going to tell me do this, do this. I think Mr. Mohill would have liked it if someone at the time had told him do this, do this. That is solicitation of lewd acts in a public place, and he was arrested and convicted of that. And then, and they gave him probation, they gave him probation, and he was out, and he got some community service hours, if I understand it correctly. But then again, less than a year later, in 1988, guess what happened? Same thing. He was arrested again for 647A. Goodness gracious. Solicitation of lewd acts in a public place, or exposing yourself, I mean, it's, could be one or the other, I don't know which occurred. And usually, I don't know, I'm not practicing law, but usually, it's when there's a sting operation, and there's an officer involved. Now, Mike, I find this detestable, and I mean, I find what I'm doing. So, I hate this, but I'm not going to sit up here and be a punching bag for you and that crook, Mr. Allen, any longer. I'm going to take you down if you come here and just blatantly make up stories out of whole cloth, and with your partners, I mean, you know what I, Lynn Myers, I don't refer to Barry Allen as that old con man. He's like Fagin. He's like Fagin in Oliver Twist. All the people who work for him are all crooked as a dog's hind leg. Mr. Espiritu, who had his own problems with the law, right? Now we have Mike Mohill. You're not going to get away with it, Mike. Ethics, character, yes, they count. I have them, you need to learn them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and I am going to make this a public record, as well as the photos. City clerk, I'm turning this over to you. You might want to wash your hands after.
Margaret Hammond.
I wasn't involved in any of that lewd act stuff, believe me. I don't go downtown LA. My name is Margaret Hammond. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. I have been a resident for 50 years. Now, I have this to say, I've listened to all of nasty whatever going on for weeks, read it in the paper, and I kept thinking, there's something not working here. What is this about? Well, in the interest of fair play, I am going to address the subject of owning and being part of a condominium, townhouse, living arrangement. I have owned condos for 25 years, and was the, on the board as secretary treasurer for about 10 to 12 years. I know, and I have a knowledge of how associations work. Now, when there is a flood, or a fire, or anything that happens that affects the units, and the walls, the ceilings, the floors are damaged in those units, around those units, they are common area, and therefore, they have to be repaired by the association. And the association is responsible for hiring the contractors, and arranging for the workers and their permits. The owners of the units have nothing to say about it. The board of the association handles it. I know, I still have. I have troubles with mine, too. And I'm saying, they, they do all the work, the electrical, the plumbing, whatnot. They pull the permits. And then, that, the common areas, as I've already said, include the walls, the ceilings, the decks, the outside grounds, the pool. Problems with the pool at my condos, believe me. When the unit owner has to do the inside of the unit, take care of repairing it, and they can force you to do so, they say you've got to keep your unit up, and at your own expense. So then, he has to get permission and hire, usually approved by the board, contractors and so forth, to do the work. They want to know that it's being done properly. Believe me. Sometimes I want to get a handyman, they say, nope, got to have an electrician to do it. And it's so, and my workers, it is their responsibility to pull the permits for me, for them to do the work, just like a roof I had done here in Glendale. My roofer pulled, I think, three or four permits for the work that he had done. Had to have one for the house, one for the garage, and one for another, something else, anyway. In Mr. Draymond's case, there was a flood, as we all know, that was caused not by him, but a galvanized pipe, an old galvanized pipe in the walls broke, and the association decided that they would be replaced with copper, which is a good idea after that many years. I don't know how old the units are, but that's what happens. And in our homes, too. My houses, I've had all my properties have been replaced with copper, and of course, you end up paying for it, probably in assessments and so forth. Now, the, Mr. Draymond tried to, after the work was done by the homeowners' association, wanted to have the rest of the work himself, but unfortunately, because the units were vacant, the, nobody would give him a loan. I mean, I know that for a fact, too. I had a unit that was, a place that was vacant, and I wanted to get a loan, and they said, well, no, it's not, you have to, it has to be lived in, or habitable, or whatever. So therefore, he was held at bay by the fact that he could not get the loan to complete his work. I find the pictures of the units, I had not really gotten, I'd been sort of thinking, there's something going on here. This doesn't seem right to me, all these accusations against Mr. Draymond. I was sitting quiet, not, I didn't get involved, really, I just tried to figure out what was going on. But once he said "common area," it went click, and I began to realize what he was faced with and what was happening. Those pictures that were there, I don't know if they were of his unit, or another unit, maybe, that was having work done, but I find it very, his privacy being invaded by the fact of showing those pictures of the inside of his home, I think is disgusting. I would be livid. I mean, I know the law is that you can take pictures from the sidewalk of a, of the outside of a house, but to go so far as to take the pictures from the inside like that, I really find that. Now, I don't know how you feel about me when I'm saying, I'm trying to tell you the truth of how I feel about it, and that's all I'm doing. And I feel that Mr. Draymond deserves that, to be, for somebody to come up and say how they feel about it and what they feel happened. Thank you.
Sharon Thompson, followed by Robert Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council people. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but after hearing all this trash going on from Mr. Barry Allen, I decided to write down a few words, and I didn't bring my glasses, so bear with me. I would like to remind you, all the citizens of this great city, to stand by Councilman John Draymond, and remember his integrity and fairness in all his efforts to bring many new projects to Glendale and protect our quality of life. And just to touch on a few, this Mr. Barry Allen tries to trash Mr. Draymond, but his words have no merit, there's no truth. As you've heard tonight, he has conned my husband and I out of money that he had collected for us. He can't be trusted. Mr. Allen, please stop this personal attack on such a fine individual. He is not guilty, and he never was. We need good men like Councilman John Draymond to lead us in the future. Citizens out there, please remember this, and stand by the truth. Thank you.
Robert Thompson, followed by Bob Getz.
Good evening, I'm Robert Thompson. I, after hearing Mr. Allen trash Mr. Draymond, of course, Mike Mohill, which, that was an experience, I had to say something, and I wrote down all these little things, and then, of course, Ms. Myers and Mr. Draymond himself, with their eloquent speeches, kind of covered it all much better than I could. I just wanted you to come up here and reiterate about, my wife and I are the victims of Mr. Allen. He collected a bunch of money, and then didn't give it to us. It was a so-called defense fund, interesting enough, because we were being sued for slander. So, we got this defense fund, and then after about a year or so, I finally said to him, the bills are starting to come in, how about some of the money? Oh, well, you know, I'll have to go to the board of directors, which is his wife, Vanguard. And then about a month later, he said, well, we'll be sending the checks out, but we're only going to pay you half, and then, of course, there's my 10% cut, because I'm handling the fees for you, so we'll send you a few dollars. So eventually, after, the next time I talked to him, he said, you know, my computer broke, and it crashed, and I don't have your address. And then the next time, he said, I changed banks, and I have a brand-new account, and I can't write any checks. Then the next time, he said, oh, I sent you the check. Then the next time I talked to him, he said, you cashed the check. And I said, well, give me a copy of the check, and let's see who signed the back of it. Oh, well, no, you're under investigation by the bank, and I can't do that. So bottom line was, I got one half of some of the funds with a promise to get the other half in two weeks. I never got it. And then our attorney got a hundred and some odd dollars from him, and he said, that's all. He didn't send the money to us. I figured it out, he kept, he paid me, well, he held back almost 47% of the money that he collected for our defense fund for his own personal gain. So this just goes to show you the type of integrity the man has, which is none. This thing he had last week, he brought in this so-called film crew from the Channel 11. He really was trying to make this a bell situation, where, oh, we've got a crooked politician here, and I'm going to be on the news, and this is a new thing. And of course, after Channel 11 heard and watched, they said, this is ridiculous, this is a setup, it was all for political gain, I would imagine, to try to help Mr. Mohill. And it fizzled out, and it didn't happen. My concern is that John Draymond's integrity was slandered, and being that I live in the far north Glendale, we have been the recipient of a lot of wonderful things that John has instigated and led, and this trashing and dirty, dirty pool stuff, could not go on. I had to say something, and as clumsy as I am in fishing around here, I just had to let you know that the man who has the integrity in this room, as far as the people that we've been speaking of, is John Draymond, and Barry Allen, and Mike Mohill are joke. Thank you.
Bob Getz, followed by Mike Labutsky.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Bob Getz, a resident of northwest Glendale. I recall standing at this podium many, many months ago to raise my concerns about proposals to increase speed limits on a number of city streets. I might add, West Glen Oaks Boulevard was among those streets listed, and you can imagine how some of us felt about raising the speed limits on that street. Considering the city's serious speeding problem, raising speed limits seemed to be the last thing we needed at that time. Now, it was terribly frustrating that evening, to hear that there was very little the city could do to avoid raising speed limits on those streets. Glendale officials explain that setting speed limits on local streets is primarily a state, or is primarily determined by state law. It requires Glendale to conduct periodic surveys to determine the average prevailing speeds motorists are driving on certain streets. And then, the speed limits are set based on a state formula that is applied to these average speeds. I suspect the state's intrusion in setting speed limits on Glendale streets has been a major irritation to our police department, the city attorney's office, Public Works, and to some of you sitting on the dais up there. On more than one occasion, I've heard city officials say that this state law is hampering efforts to deal with our speeding problem here in Glendale, and should be changed. Well, lady and gentlemen, relief may be just around the corner. Sunday's News Press reported that our new state assemblyman, Mike Gatto, has introduced a bill amending the state law a bill amending the state law on setting local speed limits. If passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, this bill would allow the city to set speed limits regardless of these speed surveys. Now, this change would acknowledge that city officials can respond to local traffic problems and traffic dangers much more effectively than a state formula. If city staff determine that the Gatto bill offers substantive improvements, I would hope the city could vigorously support this legislation and the adoption of this bill. Now, there are several things that the city council can do as part of an advocacy effort. For example, you could agendize a subject and pass a supportive resolution, much like you did today, for Measure S. Once that, if you were to come up with a resolution like that, it should, of course, be sent to local legislators who legislate over this district, and to the governor's office. Now, you could go one, another step further, and you could contact the councils of Burbank and Pasadena and urge them to do the same. And you could do something further by having the city's representative on the Southern California Association of Governments, that are known as SCAG, raise this issue with their board, I think it's called the general, well, I'm not sure what they, what they call themselves anymore, but certainly, SCAG represents roughly 100 cities and counties in this LA basin, and so advocacy with that group would be very effective. They take positions on legislation affecting this area all the time. And finally, going one step further, you could have our representative on the League of California Cities, check and see if they're doing anything, and urge them to support this. This, this is an issue that this city council has addressed before, and I think you have reflected your concerns about the inability to override some of the state formula. And so, these are just a few of the, the examples of things that could be done. Mainly, though, I think we ought to realize that this may be an excellent opportunity for cities to regain some of the control that they've lost to the state regarding setting these speed limits. Let's not blow this opportunity. Thank you.
You, Mike Labutsky, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mike Labutsky. I would like to talk today about, actually Armenian genocide, since we had the delegation from Armenia a couple of day, a couple of sessions ago, I believe, and I was not able to prepare for that because of the visit from the homicide department. But before I go to that issue, I would like to point your attention to the New York Times, which actually, from the, from the March the 3rd, which describes the United States Supreme Court decision regarding upholding hateful protest as free speech. I would like you to take a moment and kind of think about what the free speech is. I believe I was in the gym, and there was a lot of noise, but I believe that I heard on the January 11 city council meeting, that some of the residents mentioned that the Glendale City Police intimidated press. This is First Amendment, ladies and gentlemen. But the reason I'm talking about this is, as you may see on this picture, this picture was prepared by me for Halloween for my daughter. Now, a Glendale city police officer came, he was very aggressive, actually, there were four officers, three of them were very quiet, one was extremely aggressive, and I alleged that he was on drugs, and started shouting at me that I promote hate speech. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is not esfastika, this is antisfastika, this is actually a religious sign of the religion called Yanis, which is very peaceful, extremely peaceful religion. Now, I would like, because I found in, in the agenda, oral communications, that, that I can request that you investigate the allegations and report to the public that you do it. And you, because I already reported to the watch commander, and you know what happened? I requested for the protection of the Glendale City Police from the guy that I wasn't sure he was even a policeman, I thought that he was a gang member dressed as a Glendale City policeman, and that he was on drugs, he didn't want to show his ID. What are you, are we living in terrorist country, where the police is unaccountable and violates free speech and religion freely? And then, when somebody complains, the watch commander comes and practically kidnaps the citizens, I spent three hours in handcuffs, that's the result. My finger is seriously damaged, I was sitting like that. And you know what those officers did? There were eight of them. They stolen my belt, historical belt of Buffalo soldiers. So you can actually, according to your oral communication schedule, investigate and reveal to the public why it happened and what happened. Now, Armenian genocide, uh, I have a little, a handout here from the Wikipedia about Armenian genocide, actually, my very friend has a grandfather who was a direct witness of Armenian genocide, and he's on international committee to preserve the memories of this genocide. Now, because I am from Poland, I have a particular respect for any human rights abuses, and especially genocide. I wanted to show you this. This was a concentration camp in Poland called Stuhthof. The Nazis were cooking human heads and converting them to soap. Now, what happened was, I was kidnapped twice, I have a list of the crimes that the Glendale City Police committed on me. I was kidnapped twice, I was sexually abused, my, my wife's passport was stolen, my wife's green card was stolen, uh, let me see, I have about 52 crimes committed on me, and I ended, ended up in Glendale Adventist Medical Center. You know, that you were talking about smoking here, I, as a result, I smoke 80-plus cigarettes a day, because I was kidnapped by Glendale City Police and placed in that place. You know that they addict people for smoking there? You have city, uh, actually talking about no smoking.
Mr. Mayor, the time has expired.
Okay, I will continue next time, but I would really like to, to, to request that report, because this is serious.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Herbert Milano, followed by Harry Zavlos.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Earlier today, Mayor Najarian, you, you offered a, a new rapprochement with regard to our relationship, and I'd like to take you up on it, primarily with regard to these topics having to do with the budget, which continued to be my ongoing interest. In the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the last one, um, that covers up to June 30th of 2010, uh, there's a section on page 49 that covers post-employment benefits. And there is on page 50, a description of the unfunded actuarial accrued liability of $103 million, 947,000. The actuarial value of those planned assets is zero. When you look at the trends or the history of this particular fund, it, the increases primarily have accrued in the last three years. And so, as you are planning a renewed, more constrained city budget, I would suggest that perhaps, um, a look at this particular fund would merit some significant attention. There is another section within the city's financials, which is the, um, which is the compensation insurance fund. This is an internal service fund, and the compensation insurance fund is explained to finance an account for the city workers' compensation claims. Funding is derived from charges in lieu of actual premiums to various city operations. During this particular calendar year, there were $16 million in claims. So, for a fairly long time, the concern of the city council has been about the revenue side of the problem. How are we going to obtain the funds necessary to continue operations and still maintain a city budget? Those two sections that I just brought to you, I believe merit a considerable amount of attention, and they have not received that attention, and they did not receive one during the last budget session, or the sessions that we had last year. And of all the years that I've been coming to budget study sessions, they have not been covered. And I thought this may be a good place to start. The pension obligation increases, as it appears in the notes to the financial statement, are pretty severe. There's going to be a projected 36.4% of the basic salaries for safety employees, 36.4% expected, just to go towards the pension obligation. So, you have the pension obligation, you have the workers' compensation, and then you have the post-employment. Those alone are tens of millions of dollars, more than anything that was planned a few years ago. So, if you are going to really seriously tackle this budgetary problem, I would suggest that you look at those three as a major effort to figure out how we can control the budget so that it matches the type of revenues that we're now getting. Thank you very much.
You, Mr. Milano. Harry Zavlos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavlos, I'm a resident of Glendale. As a result of a legal analysis that appeared in a report that was given to the council some weeks ago, this council decided to discontinue charter authorized transfers of water fees to the general fund to be in compliance with Proposition 218. There was also a cost side of that report, where the report explored the possibility of unreimbursed resources of the general fund used for GWP as a basis for transferring water fees back to the general fund as a reimbursement, and that that would be consistent with Proposition 218, and I agree it would be. I certainly have difficulty, though, with some of the areas that that report identifies as fruitful avenues for such reimbursement, but that's not what I want to talk about tonight. One of the problems with the report is, and the resolution passed by this council that urges the staff to explore those possibilities for reimbursement, it, the report says nothing about unreimbursed resources of GWP used on behalf of the general fund. And yesterday, at the Glendale Water and Power Commission hearing, Mr. Steiger confirmed four areas where that occurs. The first is that two-thirds of the Perkins Building, the GWP building, is occupied by general fund departments, and GWP is not reimbursed for the use of that two-thirds. And that's particularly egregious, because obviously, GWP could use that space, because as I understand it, in order to be able to carry on their work, they've had to go out and lease commercial space. The other area confirmed by Mr. Steiger yesterday was the providing maintenance, service, and supply of the fire hydrant system throughout the city, that is not reimbursed by the general fund to the GWP, at least according to Mr. Steiger. Third area is that GWP has an extensive billing system. Not only does it bill for itself for electrical and water, but it bills on behalf of departments that are general fund departments, trash, sewer, hazardous materials. Mr. Steiger confirmed there's been no attempt to allocate the costs entailed by the GWP in collecting for those general fund departments, nor any attempt to reimburse GWP for them. The fire department operates a hazardous waste facility on GWP property. GWP is not reimbursed for the use of that property. Now, what, and incidentally, today I got a phone call about two other areas where GWP resources are used for the benefit of the general fund, and they're not reimbursed, but I haven't a chance to confer them with Mr. Steiger. So now, what's my point? My point is simply this, fairness to the ratepayers demands that if this city is going to carefully examine to see if there are general fund resources that aren't reimbursed, that are used for GWP in order for GWP to reimburse the general fund, then fairness demands that you examine with equal diligence and care GWP resources used for the general fund, and that in fact, if the general fund is going to be reimbursed for its resources, GWP be reimbursed for its resources. Now, I would ask this council today, just in the sake of fairness, the kind of fairness that even a five-year-old can understand, fairness that if ignored, I think verges on the cynical, to make it clear to the public and to the staff that you expect the same kind of diligence and care that the staff will use to examine unreimbursed resources of the general fund on behalf of GWP, that they will use that same care and that same diligence to examine GWP resources used for the general fund. And I ask you to do that tonight, and frankly, I think this request is a simple request for fundamental fairness and reasonableness to the ratepayers, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, I don't have any other cards. Any comments?
Just wanted to make the comments that, um, Mr. Milano's part of the team, he's always blogging on Vanguard and so forth, so I'll ask him the same thing, try to get the nonprofit that he's associated with to give us an accounting. Once again, it's so simple, the list of the names and the checks that have gone into the Vanguard account, and those that have been written, that's all. That's all we would like to see.
Were you here when he announced a new rapprochement with the city council?
Yeah, I know, but this is an old issue, we haven't gotten past that issue yet, and like I say, he's part of the, of the Vanguard team, so maybe he can help. I know he tried, he tried some intervention at some point, but that was so long ago, maybe we can try it again.
Any other comments? We have some new business to handle.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't want to necessarily backtrack to the item we already discussed, I appreciate you to note in filing a report on elections promotions, I did want to make one, um, observation known to viewers, I think it'll be helpful. On the sample ballot that people will be receiving this, by this weekend, it actually has a calendar in there marking that, uh, March 29th is the last day to request vote-by-mail applications. Also, on the document to request a vote-by-mail application on actual ballot card, right here clearly, it says in the box, "It must be received by the elections official by March 29th, 2011." So that's already on there, this actually document is populated on our Glendale Votes website, and I didn't want to mention this to, uh, toot our own horn, but I will at this point, we have 20% increase in visitation to that website this year over the previous elections. Also, if there's anyone watching out there who owns a business or would like to post a reminder... a reminder in a window, if they call us, we can provide them with a card to place in their store window. Our volunteers will also be going out to various business areas in the city to distribute these cards to remind people when election days. Thanks.
You? Mr. Weaver, Mr. Draymond, before the new business?
Well, I was just wanting to say, since Mr. Kasakian raised the issue, the site looks great.
And we're watching you, Mr. Kasakian.
I know you are.
Very closely.
Now, new business?
In case you haven't realized.
New business now?
Mr. Weaver.
Good. Now, I'd like to move that the city of Glendale, through its city attorney, be and is hereby authorized to join as an intervener. What?
Intervener.
Intervener, that's a good one, through the HDL companies in the matter of City of Brisbane et al. versus California State Board of Equalization, case number CPF09509231, CPF09509232, and Council further authorizes HDL to retain the law firm of Wendell, Rosen, and Black and Dean LLP to represent the interests of the city of Glendale in the above entitled matter. The Director of Administrative Services, Finance, is authorized to issue payment to HDL companies in the amount of $1,500 as the city of Glendale's share of costs in connection with this action.
Ball call, please.
Moved by Councilmember Weaver and seconded by Councilmember Quintero. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Is there another new item?
Okay. Mr. Draymond, you.
Borrow, borrow the document. I move that the lawsuit entitled, okay, let me take two. I move that the lawsuit entitled Duop LLC versus City of Glendale Superior Court Case Number BC42981 be compromised and resolved for the full and complete sum of $445,000, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the Finance Director is authorized to issue a warrant in said paid, excuse me, said sum payable to Duop LLC and the law offices of Graham Begy? Vage? Graham Vage LLP for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Second. Ball call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Now, is there a motion?
I'll move with adjourn.